Okay, good evening. This is Thursday, May 11. This is the Cituate Planning Board meeting. We have an agenda that was posted. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First up this evening is Horsley-Witten. Is someone here from Horsley-Witten? Ah, okay.
Someone else?
Great, great.
Come forward.
Absolutely, please. Grab a seat. I think the objective today was really just to get a chance to discuss, first of all, to meet you.
Sure.
Because we have had this project filed for the Toll Brothers Development, and we wanted to get a chance to know who was going to be supporting us from engineering expertise and consulting expertise. And then just talk a bit about the scope of work, and I think also talk a little bit about coordinating part of the review, particularly on the stormwater with the Conservation Commission. And I see we have a number of members of the Conservation Commission here in the audience, as well as our conservation agents. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us. I'm proud of that.
So, I think it would be helpful, and I don't know if you have prepared words or anything, but it'd be helpful to just get an introduction to you and the Horsley-Witten team, and talk through the kinds of support we think we'll need for this special review.
Yeah, that's great. I can give you an overview of sort of myself, the company, and the expertise we can bring to the board, as well as the Conservation Commission. Thanks to Laura for doing the scope of work. I just got a quick look at it. It seems like the things we need to hit for the project. But I'm Joe Longo. I'm a principal engineer with the Horsley-Witten Group. We're about 50 people. We have an office in Sandwich, Boston, and Providence. We've got folks that are experts. We have about eight professional engineers. We have surveying in-house. We have wetland experts. We've worked with your Conservation Commission for your folks in town and with projects we've been in front of you on. We've got landscape architects. We're, as I said, surveying, planners. So, we've kind of hit, and myself, I've done a bunch of oil and hazardous materials assessment remediation for a long period of time on residential, commercial, industrial properties. So, we've got a pretty well-rounded group. We've also, we've been on both sides of the table with regard to peer reviews. We've done hundreds, I can say, literally hundreds of peer reviews of projects of variety of sizes that have included all the aspects you're talking about with the project in front of you. We've also been designers. We're engineers. We do development work as well. So, we kind of get both sides of it. We've done projects from permitting straight through design and construction inspection, again, for development and for review. So, we're very familiar with that in regards to how we need to comply with the subdivision rules and regs. You want to meet those, as well as fire safety and access, compliance with the stormwater policy with regard to the CONCOM and the wetland, the wetlands in the vicinity, as well as, again, I guess, the 21E or the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. If it's a listed site and there has been remediation done, we could review what's been done where and does it comply with that regulation. So, we do all that in-house. I believe the only thing that we wouldn't be helping you with, that we don't do in Horsley-Witten's traffic. When we came in front of the board, or in front of the town, I should say, I don't know, a year and a half ago, I think the town put out a request for qualifications. We submitted a package to you all. We interviewed and were selected. At the time, we had Jennifer Conley onboard to do transportation, and she's just not doing this anymore. So, I mentioned to Laura, we might need to find another teammate to help us out with that.
Gotcha.
And I think Janet Bernado was my colleague that would probably manage most of this and be in front of yourselves, along with myself, for the review. She was at Conservation, I think, last week when they were in front of your board. So, we're familiar with the project. We're familiar with the town. We've done a couple of road projects. You know, we've worked with your engineering department, hired by them directly on some projects as well, so familiar with Cituate and what needs to be done to review this project.
And I will open it up to the panel here to ask questions, but one, just a quick question on this, on the 21E, you know, do you have LSPs on staff, or is that something that's outsourced?
Interesting question. For about two months, our LSP license has lapsed, so we've got about a two-month window where that will need to be covered. Myself and Mark are both, you know, longtime, we've worked in the business for 20 years doing that work as an LSP under the MCP. We've also got another gentleman we use regularly who's an LSP, not directly for us, but would be under subcontract. You know, I think, again, it's, the license is a thing that's great to have. The proponent or the applicant would be required to have an LSP representing them. If there was any remediation, we would review their work. We wouldn't stamp or approve any plans. It would be up to their LSP to do that.
Right. I just wondered whether you-
The timing is intriguing.
Whether you had the, sort of, the background and expertise that sort of came with the LSP.
I can say that for, I've pulled dozens of tanks, done excavations, soil remediation systems, design-operated, simple tank pulls and assessments of similar properties for almost 20 years.
And I will cede to other questions here in a sec, but if you don't mind. In terms of the, you said you represented sort of developments or projects here as well. What are the, sort of, the most recent ones you've done?
Not in Cituate.
Oh, not in Cituate?
No, just been designer of record for, you know, housing projects.
I was asking about Cituate.
I don't think we've done a housing project in Cituate.
And how familiar are you with this particular development?
From myself, from looking at the development application, it was a year ago. Other than that, I know the site. We went to the site. We looked at what they were generally going over at that time. Haven't been brought up to speed since then, so I don't know what's been submitted. I would need to review the plans and the applications as they came in.
I understand it was just submitted, Laura, two days ago?
I believe it was two days ago. Yeah, we're looking for one piece of information, so it has not officially been stamped in.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, it's still sort of pending at this point?
Right.
Yeah, we did, we met with the Toll Brothers Group at that time. Again, I think it was about that time ago, and kind of started this process, and then it just stopped, and we hadn't heard back until a couple of weeks ago that things were moving again.
Right. And I understand that there's been an application filed at the Conservation Commission, and you've already had at least one hearing, right? Yeah.
They were not, Janet Bernado was present at the meeting to observe, but hadn't been-
Right.
Right. I don't think we've run contracts for either board yet.
No. Okay. Cool. And what would you do with respect to traffic? Do you have another sub?
I would recommend, there's several companies I could recommend that are used to doing this. McMahon Associates is one that comes to mind. I don't know if they're your traffic folks. They are? Oh, what's using them? That probably won't work.
No, I don't think so.
We'll make some other recommendations.
Okay, great. Question?
I'm just listening.
You said you hadn't done anything specifically within regards to home development or residential development in Cituate. Is there another place that was somewhat similar to this, at least the proposal? I know it's kind of hard because you're not familiar with the current proposal, but-
Right.
With-
Housing?
Yeah. I guess more of the subdivision, I guess, for something that would be similar.
Pine Hills was the biggest, yeah. Worked on a lot of the water. And so, I guess I should also add, we do a lot of water and sewer design from small to large systems, half a million gallons a day, systems like that. Ashes Path in Mashpee, we've done housing in Hingham. The project in Hanover by the Cushing School that we did with an affordable housing developer. We've worked for, I don't know, EA Fish, PBD Properties, Community Builders, you know, again, Green Company, Pine Hills, from hundreds of units to a dozen units, Housing Assistance Corp, companies like that.
Okay, great. Well, I see, I'm looking at the previous submittal that Laura was nice enough to share with us, that has all of your pictures and resumes and background information.
Yeah.
So-
When I was a few years younger.
Oh, you look younger now, though. So, it does seem like you have a lot of hazardous experience, like you were saying. So, I think this is going to be, in particular, very focused for this site, obviously.
Right. We've done demolition projects. I did a power plant demolition in Medfield that just assessment, abatement-led soil remediation. For the Steamship Authority, we took down an ice rink, had to do all the asbestos-led abatement and assessment in soil and buildings, and then that was replaced by-
And groundwater as well?
Parking lot. Yeah. Barnstable Airport, I've done a lot of groundwater assessment, as well as remediation. So, sampling, monitoring plans, comparing the results to the standards in the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Very familiar with that.
Yeah. On the, I won't call this your resume, but on the little bio, it says here, you know, remediation to water supply and wastewater treatment plants. So, can you give us an example of that recently, or as far as, like, where you did that for a development?
Remediation for development? I would say the remediation work I've done was for redevelopment, not of, like, an existing water system.
Okay.
More remediating groundwater at the source area where there was a spill or a release. For the Hyannis Water Department, we helped them with, they have an PFOS issue down there now. Fluorinated hydrocarbons are everywhere, apparently, and helped them with designing some activated carbon units for treatments, previous to the public water supply.
Okay. Great. Well, I think, like Ann said, it's more informational. I don't have too many questions.
Okay.
Reggie, do you?
I'm just trying to absorb all this. This is a lot to you, but, so, you're doing great.
Thanks. Yeah, I think Laura's drafted sort of a scope of services, but we just got it today, so we're going to take a look at it. And I think she shared a copy.
Yeah.
Just to start to look at it.
It's a great start, to figure out, you know, what exactly the project needs. It's a wide variety of review, really. It's from wetland, stormwater, hazardous, waste remediation. And, you know, other than traffic, we have 50 people that have been experienced with the peer review side and the development side, projects like this, so.
So, you have the ability to pull on the resources you need at any particular-
Yeah, I feel like we can adequately review the projects for the town.
Okay. And you said Janet is actually going to be the lead through the-
Janet was slated to be the project manager. She's typically around. She couldn't make it tonight. I know she was here last week, but yes, it'd be myself or her.
What, since I have members of the Conservation Commission here, I would be happy for you to jump in if you have questions, or if you just, you know, have some observations on this as well.
If you don't mind, I appreciate it.
No, no, we'd love to hear from you.
Frank Snoll. We've had some experience with Horsley-Witten, more from consulting piece. They helped us with our Driftway-
Yeah.
-project.
I remember that.
And I think it was Amy Ball who was involved in that. Is she still?
Yes.
And would she be involved in this project as well?
Yeah, absolutely. We have four or five wetlands experts, and Amy's most familiar with Cituate, so I would want to use her for reviewing anything that involved wetlands on the project.
I guess I want to go through some of the scope of things as well.
Please.
And, you know, we've certainly got our thoughts on where things, what we'd like to see. We've had the opportunity, we weren't the consultant when we did the INRAT. Before that, we used someone else to review that, but, so the commission's gotten familiar with the property-
Oh, good.
-in terms of, well, these areas already on it, isolated wetlands, things like that. We've already roamed around there a little bit. And then there was some filings with some of the cleanup, because there was wetlands right adjacent to some of the buildings they were working on. So, we got a little taste of that, but not-
Yeah, and honestly, I need to get back up to speed on exactly what's been done in the last, you know, year or so, and become more familiar with the project again to-
Right.
-give you an assessment of any kind, you know, at this point would be pretty-
I assume that'll be part of what's been filed as an application, you know, as sort of the latest on that, I would assume so, but we haven't, I haven't seen it yet, so maybe you've already seen some of that stuff, too. I don't know.
Not in depth.
Okay. So, that is something we'll probably want to get into in-depth on. And just a question for you, Frank, is, if you're familiar with the site a little bit, are there habitats or anything like that on this site that are of issue?
I don't believe so. I think there wasn't any heritage pieces or anything like that.
That's my recollection.
The only thing, there's a piece of the wetlands that's connected through a drain that's under Tilden Road, so that actually connects to a much broader PBDW, and actually goes into, to a brook.
Mm-hmm.
So, it'd be the bigger piece.
Yeah, my recollection is, though, is that was a topic when we started this before, is what to do with the stormwater down in that area. So, we want to take another hard look at that.
Excuse me, you know, we'd chatter, we'd continue to chatter about, we have, we opened our hearing, obviously, we were interested in dealing with the wetlands issues. The meeting was dominated by people's concerns for contamination, so I'm glad you're here tonight to talk about that, because it's a concern for everyone. And it is important, but there's obviously a lot more to this project than-
Right.
-than that. And a lot of these have been covered before. Polkie Brothers was in for a 4B a few years ago, longer now. So, there was quite a bit of information uncovered at that time, which I think would be helpful. We've got a good box of information already, and our retired building inspector was pretty immersed in that. So, there's some good folks in the town hall that have some good information as well.
That'd be very helpful, because those type of investigations tend to follow a lot of paper.
All right. Yeah, we also, I didn't bring it up before, but we also have a coastal resource person who was very interested in some of the discharges that go towards the marsh.
The stormwater discharges to the marsh, yeah?
As they get towards that marsh between Tilden Road and, between Happy Road and Oceanside. Is that whole marsh, you know, that little conversation we can see?
On the east side, right?
Yes. Yeah, but how that discharge is, and the impacts they'll have on that marsh.
Have to meet the stormwater policy.
Anything else? I know we have a few other Conservation members here.
No, we're kind of just here to hear, you know, what scope you're looking at.
Yeah.
Because they've already gotten their Phase Two done, and we were waiting for Toll Brothers to release, or we were wondering if they were going to release that study to the public. They already have the RAO, and so we're waiting for that.
Oh, Phase Two comprehensive site, isn't it?
Yeah. Toll Brothers did it, right, Janet?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, we were, at Conservation Meeting, we were discussing possibly seeing those results, if that's going to happen or not. Well, first, I got to get somebody onboard.
Yeah, right.
The one thing, too, that we covered the first time around was the whole wetland delineation, so we're not going back and reflagging lines. We just have to put them on a plan.
An R?
What's that?
The ANR.
Yep. In ANR, yeah. In ORRIT. And then we have, there's a frontal pool that's on site there, you know, natural heritage area as well, yeah.
But that's off the board, I think.
So, Amy's office is right outside of mine, so when I'm looking at remediation, I'll be yelling at her, she'll be yelling back at me, talking about the wetlands.
No, just, I only know the two.
Yeah, there's a lot of replication proposed, too, so we'd need somebody like Amy to talk to us about that.
Okay.
And you mentioned you have, I don't want to leave the subject unless you guys are good with it, but I'm thinking about infrastructure. You've got experience in water, wastewater, you know, kind of the main infrastructure components that would go with a subdivision.
Yeah, I think the biggest example is Pine Hills. We did pretty much the whole water system, the irrigation system, the wastewater system's about up to half a million gallons a day now.
When you say did, you designed them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Construction Administration as well, right through up, we're actually still on board with them, doing their sort of keyway for their operators, too.
And in that sort of experience, is there any takeaways that we should know about?
Well, yeah, sure. If something can go wrong, be ready for it. I had a guy on site yesterday drilling a well that had been dig-safed and hit a two-inch PVC water lane that nobody knew was there. So, stuff happens.
Yeah, yeah. But in terms of the actual sort of design work, were there, I mean, did it come out as a sort of anticipator, or were there changes ahead? I'm just trying to understand.
I think when you design something, you do the best you can as an engineer, and sometimes things change in the field, and you have to accommodate that, you know, being prepared and going through projects that, where we've done road design, water and wastewater installation, and understanding what to look for, sure, that makes a difference.
Yeah.
In the end, you get an ASB build that might be a little different than your design, but, you know, if it best suits the project, then that makes sense.
I think one of the things that we've run across recently, that I guess we just want to be cognizant of, is that as we've gone through approvals of subdivisions, things have changed on the site, whether it's grades or whatever, and it changed the nature of the stormwater, the performance of the stormwater system-
Sure.
-to the point that it impacted, you know, the neighbors who weren't involved in the subdivision, and that's obviously one of the things we want to try to avoid. So, the ability to sort of manage that and find a way to manage that, so that doesn't, so that we're not reacting to the problem, we're sort of preventing the problem, it would be one of those things that we want to make sure we sort of integrate into any kind of decision-making.
I think that makes great sense, doing decisions that are, that have inspections during construction, and then after the project is built, to ensure compliance. I think that's a great way to do it. It's a great idea. I mean, we would want to look at the watersheds, the subwatersheds, the modeling, how it's been sized, look at the pipe sizes, the catch basin locations, the treatment systems, and make sure, again, they comply with not only your rules and regs, but the master water policy from a quality standpoint.
Right.
And then, yes, if it's being built, I don't know if you all would do inspections or engineering, or you'd want third-party inspection review. We're doing that in Framingham right now for a large, a large development with, you know, miles of water installation. We're out there doing that for the city.
I think we would want support for the Planning Board to do that, third-party inspection.
Sure.
I'm just cognizant of the fact that we had all of that done in these subdivisions and still ended up with the problem. And so, we, as we go along, we may need to talk about how we sort of change our process or approach-
Okay.
...so that we avoid that kind of problem in the future. But that's just one thing that we're quite aware of right now, and we want to make sure we address.
I had an additional thought as we were going through this. Obviously, stormwater, hazardous materials and waste, those are all extremely important. Subdivision rules and regulations, but as the architect, I'm concerned about visual and aesthetics. Do, when you do, like, a review, is there ever any review of that or recommendations, since you did say you had architectural services? And I was thinking of, as an example, Ann had mentioned previously about having, like, the garages always being in the front, and that was something that was maybe not recommended. We do have a design review committee that will be looking at this, but do you kind of look at those, is that part of services that you may offer, is to say recommendations?
No, we have landscape architects. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, that's, but not architecture review. We wouldn't do any building architecture review.
Okay.
We actually put that in the scope. I don't know if it's something-
Oh, was it?
...the whole board wants to do, but I guess we'd be, if you do want to do that, maybe Horsley-Witten can identify-
Somebody else?
Someone who's a registered architect to take that role on. It's on, I don't know. It's two.
I didn't see it. That's why I was looking. I saw the subdivision rules and regulations.
Page two.
Stormwater. Yeah, it's very boring up from the bottom on page two.
That's what I checked. Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't see that. Review services by registered architect or landscape architect. Okay, for architectural design, proposed lighting. Okay, excellent.
I have to say, I think that that would be well worth-
Yeah, I do, too.
...our while, because I think it should be paid for. It should be somebody that really, really, that's not a volunteer, not to say anything negative about volunteers, but we do need-
Yeah, there's a lot of them up here.
Yeah.
All of us.
We need people that know what the whole, you know, know what they're doing, especially in a development this size.
Exactly.
This is huge. And the thing is, this development is going to have such an impact on this town, truly, a huge, huge impact. And I already have some issues with it that I'm not going to go into at this moment, but I think architecturally, it does have some issues that need to be dealt with, so that the final product is something that we can be proud of, that gee, we're glad we did this this way.
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's actually a good thing that you, I guess, were involved in Pine Hills, and I would be interested if there were similar kinds of communities that were designed or developed there, or there are other places that maybe we ought to look at for comparative analysis, so to speak. And maybe it's not something that's completely in your, kind of in your expertise, but I think those are the kind of things-
Yeah, the look of the building is something we wouldn't comment on. Just in house, we would need an architect for that.
Yeah.
Which I think you should.
I think this is, this falls into sort of that gray area between sort of site planning and, and architecture, right? There's kind of a combination of things.
Sure, yeah. And we've done-
They're not isolated from each other, right?
Right. No, I totally agree. I think they go in concert together, for sure. But site planning, conceptual design, layout, just a 65-unit project in Eastham down the Cape, worked with an architect from the beginning in the town, on the way folks wanted it to look, and wanted it to be almost like a cottage community, kind of nestled together with some open space on the outside, so that's the sort of site planning we do. Anything that goes up is an architect's job.
Right. Two dimensions only?
Well, I think, like you said, like, you know, using Pine Hills as an example, I do think there's some good design rules and aesthetics that have been done there when you drive around. It's quite nice. So, I don't know how they did it, or whether it was the developers, like, in the, let's just say, I think there is a Toll Brothers development in Pine Hills, right? Like, how they actually approached that, or did there, was there, is there an overarching master plan for the whole thing that they have to adhere to? I'm not quite sure how all that works.
That's been, I don't know how they worked out with Toll Brothers, but from the beginning, I mean, the town and the Green Company worked together on the way they wanted it to look. They wanted smaller roads. They wanted sort of the housing to all be together in certain types, and have the village center have a certain look, so it was planned out sort of from the beginning in a conceptual way, and they made the, or they've asked the developers that come in there and work with them to comply with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be an interesting component to integrate in here into this review.
Well, I do think, I'm glad that Laura put that in there. It's funny, I checked it, but I didn't actually see the second or third sentence there. So, but I would certainly advocate for having maybe a subconsultant as a person that could review that for the design aesthetics.
Sure. Yeah.
Steve, don't mind.
Yeah.
Just thinking about timing, you just got your filing, but we got ours a little while ago, and we had opening hearing pursuant to that time limitation. So, we've already opened our hearing.
Okay.
And we've scheduled, we continued that hearing until June 7, which is still a pretty tight time in terms of getting someone up to speed, and, not that it's all going to be instituted one night by any stretch, but-
Right. But there was, we were talking about sort of having a joint hearing with conservation and the planning board to particularly address stormwater.
Stormwater pieces.
And so it'd be interesting to know kind of, you know, I guess we don't actually have an official filing yet, but I'm assuming we'll have that here shortly. And, you know, is, is a June 7th that timing? Is that a good, a good time to sort of target for a joint hearing or is it?
We could be out a little bit with that.
A little further out, yeah.
I think you might go out a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for that to be that soon. I'm just, we're gonna, they're gonna be back with us June 7th again. But, you know, our first meeting was primarily dominated by like contamination concerns of residents, which we didn't want anyone to think we were not concerned about that. But it's, it's not really the things that we've.
Jurisdictionally, it's tough to get into that yet.
Right. So we'd like to get sort of back on track and start to work with things that are under our purview.
And get the support for it going now, yeah, from, from Horsley.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk tomorrow about getting started. Just let us know.
Well, you've got your things to do, but our concern would be getting someone moving.
No, I think, well, I think that's, we obviously ought to try to stay coordinated, make sure you get the support you need as well as we get the support we need for, you know, the other sets of issues as well. So I would, I would fully support that. I, it probably comes down more to whether Horsley has the people and the, and the timing to, to meet your June 7th timeframe.
Well, it would again depend on what you want reviewed really and how soon. I mean, I think we'd want to get you comments on plans so that the developer would have time to react and we'd all be on the same page when we get to the next hearing. If the goal was to, I don't know what the timing is, the goal of what the hearing would be. If it was just continued informationally or is there a?
At this point, it was pretty much that, was continue to get more information. Like I said, we never really got to any of the, I felt substantial that meeting, so.
Yeah.
We kind of talked about Frank, about an informational meeting between all of us just to get that part out of the way or, you know, in terms of setting up something with the community, right? And is that something that we want to involve the consultants with too?
So that can fill in.
That we wanted to set up a community meeting, right?
Well, I think we're, we're going to continue our hearings. I think that we've been talking about how to deal with a couple of these issues that people have concerns about.
Outside of the concrete.
Yeah. And, and that's sort of not in our, our purview, but I mean, I think people will be able to participate through these different processes.
Right. And it would certainly, if we're talking about the contamination issue and those kinds of things, I think those would certainly be within the purview of the special permit review anyway. So we would definitely want to try to integrate that and, and make sure we're accommodating, you know, the, the public at large to participate in that as well.
Yeah.
This, this room probably won't be big enough.
No.
To, I guess to your point, you know, the state has specific thresholds and requirements for, for waste sites. And if they're meeting that, then that's, you know, what, what we could check. Have you sampled the right samples? Are you meeting the right thresholds? Is your phase two on time? Those are things that are pretty cut and dry and they're in the regulation. So that's, that's a, a review. They're very comfortable we could get done pretty quickly. Just depends on how far they are along.
Understanding, there's been a lot of work done and, you know, under the MCP.
Yeah.
And so there's probably, as you suggest, a lot of paper out there to sort of get your arms around, but there's been a lot of people looking at this over time.
And we're pretty familiar with what to look for in that regard.
To get a, an example of things that were brought up though, which are concerning is that there's elementary school adjacent to the site. So as people are concerned with, when construction starts and it's the summer and it's dry.
Dust all around.
The earth is being moved around, dirt, you know.
Yep.
So to your point about sort of review as the site goes on, whether there'd be someone on site to, to keep an eye on, on various pieces of this project. I mean, it's a.
Yeah, I, you know, I think certainly construction, the activities during construction are certainly within the review process here. The interesting thing is this sounds like this could be a four, five-year construction period. So there probably, we have to probably really think about that hard, about how that gets managed on a year-to-year basis too. And, and, you know, well, apparently they're going to be on site for quite a long time, different, different areas, right? And it will probably become an issue not just with the surrounding community, but with people who've moved in to that community while there's other construction going on as well.
And it's, you know, things getting into a wetland area or buffer area, that's not usually a typical, a difficult thing to deal with. You know, even stormwater problems with this runoff can be addressed, but all of a sudden animal and dealing with some of these other pieces on site, certainly something that we need to think about.
Yeah, that's a great point.
What shall be, that's not up for.
No, but it's a great point. I mean, it's, it's obviously something, and I have to believe that Toll Brothers has already thought about that too. I'm sure we'll hear a lot from them on that as well. But I think construction management is going to be quite important here. And, and as I said, we've learned some of those lessons recently about construction management. And, you know, sort of this notion of you get a piece of paper that says this is what it's going to look like when it's done and this is how it's going to work when it's done. Particularly in a, a project that's going to take five years, it's not about when it's done. It's about what's happening through the whole process. And then that it works when it's completely done as well. So, so I, I think that'll be something that, that is certainly part of what we want to make sure we understand and talk to the, to the developer about and, and make sure they have a plan and, and we have a chance to review that plan too, so.
We did include review of that sort of construction process and construction impacts in the scope. So I think that is something that we, you know, very early in the process, we feel like we need it. Just want, I think there are a couple of things I wanted to mention here. We also included, and I don't know if anyone touched on this, fiscal impact analysis. Because that's something that's in the, for this particular type of special permit as well as in the subdivision regulations, which seem to be referenced in the document.
So cost benefits to the town, yeah.
The impact on the schools, if any, but just to clarify for the community what those impacts are and how that type of development is going to impact the project.
You all would want a review of that as part of your permit process.
Yes.
Again, fiscal, we wouldn't, we wouldn't handle something like that in us with the other party.
Okay, because I mean, in fact, in fact, I think we already have the fiscal impact analysis as part of the submission. So, so we'd be looking for something like that. And then we also included, and if it doesn't turn out to be something we can do, we can get town council to do it. But review of kind of any documents to make sure the maintenance of the stormwater system, the roads. You know, I guess if there's supposed to be language in there, dealing with some construction impacts, whatever is, is in there. And, um, dealing with the performance guarantee, if there's, well, at the beginning, the zoning allows a performance guarantee to be set. And particularly the multi-year type of development with the same roads in the base.
Sounds like a lawyer. Sounds like a lawyer.
Well, maybe it is a lawyer, but I'll look at, but also looking, someone who could look two years down the road, what's been constructed. Want, you know, a million dollars back. Does that make sense? Is that in line, out of line? You know exactly how, that kind of thing.
So it sounds like there, there are, there's three or four components that maybe, once you've had a chance to sort of look at the draft and we've had a chance to sort of work through it, we can flag those that we might need other kinds of resources for besides what Horsley provides then.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. And, and, you know, certainly if you have recommendations like traffic engineer or whatever, you know, those, those kinds of things would be quite helpful too, I think.
Steve, can I just, and maybe, of course, the women's already been on board for this and maybe the work's already been done, but part of that, the process of getting, you mentioned the sewer or water, but a piece of that was that they're getting that permission to connect was a function of, of an INI project. And so is, is Horsley-Witten overseeing that as well or is that being handled?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that all of the, and I'm blue skied, it's because I haven't seen any application, right? But I'm assuming that information is coming in with the application and then we'll want to review that and, and have some expert support to help us review that. And if that, if, it sounds like that kind of expertise might actually be up your alley.
Yeah, no, we could do that for you. I just, we haven't been engaged to do any of that work yet. So I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, and I don't know how the proponent is proposing that gets done, whether the DBW would be handling those kinds of things. I just don't know enough about it.
Right.
But it's a good question and it, it's a piece of the scope that we would expect to, to be part of the review.
And I have a question that's, I guess maybe more for Bill in the sense of when there was something fairly controversial, like the wind turbine, where there was like people on one side saying it's fine and people on the other side saying it's causing headaches, there's flicker, it's causing me to sleepless nights. After that was constructed, we had to, there was a lot of back and forth and I'm trying to think, I don't know if we paid for consultants, but someone else. I'm trying to remember the whole deal, but there were additional studies that were done after that. Is there something that we could do in this particular case or recommendations to like have the consultant look at? You know, I've, I've been reading about these cancer clusters, but some people say, oh, it has nothing to do with it. Some people say that's just random, you know? So try to, try to look at this controversy and maybe get ahead of it and have some studies or some facts. Because that's where I think it's going to be confusing, where someone says this is bad because of X, Y, and Z, but yet it's a theory or we don't know or it's speculation. And I think that's what happened with the wind turbine. People said, oh, it's terrible because of X, Y, and Z. And then there were additional studies that said, you know, no, this is okay. So.
Pulte, when Pulte looked at the property, it ended up, there was still the division in terms of the 21 E impact and the health impacts, it was never really resolved.
Was it closed though? Was this, did the DEP close it out? And again, this is maybe something for another discussion.
Yeah, the answer is yes, they did. DEP did close it up.
And I think the challenge for us is that, you know, we have to, we have to try to bring in all of the evidence for the, for the review. And where we have competing sort of opinions, as Richard said, is trying to get to the base facts and, and then try to base a decision based on those facts as opposed to, you know, sort of an opinion or a thought or, or maybe just an emotional reaction at some level too, so.
And we saw that the, the other night and it's difficult, but.
Yep.
Everybody, you know, both the town, the residents, as well as the developer, nobody wants that to be a problem when it's done.
No, I think everybody wants to get it right. I think that's definitely the case, right?
And so having, but it is, a lot of this is going to fall to the consultant to, to, to look at that and then.
Well, I think we'll also hear from the, from the developers' experts as well. So we'll at least have a couple of different opinions and, and sort of information on the table and, and there may be places where they don't line up. And that's, that's where we'll probably have to really dig in.
Yeah, and the whole system's based on environmental, human health and environmental risk, right? So there's different types of closure. There's closure that doesn't meet background, there's closure where you can leave some stuff behind because of the certain use. But, you know, if it's residential and there's a school nearby, then the threshold becomes much harder to meet.
This closure that, that limits the use, the reuse of the.
We could have that happen in, in certain instances, yep, where there's a gas station, you can leave contamination under the ground because no one's going to get there. If they're going to redevelop it as residential, they need to clean it up at that point. Those are all things we look at. And apply it to the, the use, the proposed use.
Good.
And I think those are the kind of things that people are going to want to hear and know.
Yeah. Well, we would like to hear and know them as well. So we're, I, I think we're all just speaking from a, a fair amount of, you know, uninformed, you know, knowledge. No knowledge of it at this point, only because it hasn't really been filed and we haven't really started to dig in yet, so.
I've learned just enough to be dangerous.
Sounds like my, my plumbing skills.
That's good. Well, we are kind of at the, the end of the time we've allotted here and we certainly appreciate you coming in and talking.
After I do it.
And thank you to the Conservation Commission and to the, to the proponents and, and to, to our conservation agent for being here as well. I think we still have some more to do on the scope of work, but we'll, I think we'll do that iteration as you, as, as we go along. And there will be a lot of other conversations about this topic as we get down the road, but I appreciate you coming in tonight.
No problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having us.
Okay.
Joe, Joe Longa?
I don't want to say that. 13 Ford Place. Somebody here for that?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Just a second. I want to bring up the elevations here.
Have you got them on your computer?
Yeah.
I took this.
The meeting is in the hallway right now.
Yeah, there's always a meeting after the meeting.
Was there anybody in here?
Huh?
I don't think so.
Okay. I guess we have a proponent for, or the builder for 13 Ford Place here. And we've got sort of a request that you submitted some information on, but Juan and I let you have the floor and tell us what you're trying to accomplish and why, and then we'll go from there.
And could you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm John O'Keefe from the biller of a mixed-use building. I'm building at Ford Place. And I, the building's almost complete and I changed some of the exterior. I spoke with Laura Motte last week and that's why I'm here. Just a couple of the design elements on the building. I had a cross buck design on the garage doors that I eliminated and put a beaded paneled garage door. And also there was three dormers that were on the, on the roof that I eliminated just because of cost overruns.
Can we see what we're talking about?
Well, I think, and also the dormers on the, which side is that? What, that, yeah, north side? That whole dormer, I see on the, I'm looking at the original plans. That was all eliminated.
That's still, huh? Yeah, that's still there though. The, the dormer on the backside facing Service Master.
The shed dormer?
Yeah, that's all shed on that whole side.
This piece right here?
I don't think so.
I took some pictures, so, um, do you have the pictures?
Oh, you know what? It's, um, the reason is, it's not necessarily, the dormer is going.
Because it's a hip.
It's going directly into the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you can't see it in the picture.
No, but the.
It's directly into the.
It's going, yeah, I can't see it there. Yeah, instead of a dormer, it's actually one facade, complete facade.
Straight up?
I don't know. It's a shed dormer, but instead of having the, the edge, the roof line, he's got it all completely, uh, one facade.
So there's no windows?
Well, there's windows.
There's no relief to it.
There's no, yeah, there's no, this line right here, this horizontal line is not there. It's this.
Yeah, are there pictures?
If you, yeah, here.
Oh, that's not a shed dorm at all.
Laura? Add this one. Okay.
That's just a, a straight face.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that it was supposed to be a dormer where there was a little bit of roof.
Little bit of roof cheek in front of it.
Exactly. And now there's not, there's this piece right here.
Yeah.
Is not there. So this is all flush.
And are there windows up there?
Well, the roof lines are different.
Did you see windows?
No, I don't think I did.
I didn't either.
It looks like there's an upper roof and a lower roof.
But I, I think it's hard to see unless you're over on Service Master because.
Right.
Now that's.
Yeah, because look, this little gable end piece with the return is not there, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So this, again, just picture this thing right here, this piece is now all completely gone. There's supposed to be a little bit of a relief, as you said. A little bit of the roof coming out.
And the gable end's supposed to look like a true gable end then, right? Because it doesn't have this return over here.
Right.
Like it has on the side.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
The windows don't line up.
Yeah, you're right. There is quite a bit of difference.
That's a change.
Do you want to see this?
Oh, right, okay.
So it's like.
Oh, I, okay.
None of the windows, the, the windows, this is actually, is this taller?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is this building taller?
I don't think so.
It's shorter?
I think maybe the roof doesn't go up as high.
But this window is up here.
No, it couldn't be.
Or these windows are down here, one of the two.
Yeah, none of this, none of this trim, the, the trim on the, just comes here and then goes across like this. It doesn't go down here. Right, okay.
And then the windows don't line up going across.
Nope. That's right.
One side and the other. Okay. Thank you.
And that's, that's not even the side you came in to talk about.
No, no, it isn't.
We talked about that some, but.
There was a few, yeah.
The main thing is that was noticeable from the.
The street.
The street side.
Yeah, so there's, that's the, let's see, actually that's not even here.
So what am I looking at here? Where's this door on that drawing?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Is that this door? No, we're looking at a different, that's a different view, is it?
It's this piece right here. I'm trying to see like where these, this garage door, which is the shed, right of the edge.
Oh, no, we're looking at the other side, right? We need to be looking at this side.
Yeah, I think that's, oops.
You're looking at the end. This is the end, right?
Yeah, I think that's somehow...
There's the three.
This is the sidewalk and the driveway. This is a little, yeah, sure isn't like left to right switched around. No, I'm sure it's not, but anyway, it looks like the flip side of this. But maybe John can help us get an answer?
Yeah, John, maybe you can, can you come on up and just, I'm trying to even understand what we're looking at. Is that this piece here?
On this, which is the end, right? There's, that was supposed to be a dormer. These, these windows here. And then at the end here, where there's one door and then two, where, where is that here? It's the shed part.
Not drawn in on that, there's no elevation to that side.
Okay. Where is it on the plan?
It's the right side of this here. On, it's facing that way though. It's the end of that building.
Okay. So it was never, there was no elevation on that?
There was no elevation on that. That's the...
So where, where is that on the plan? Is that over here or over here?
It's on.
There's the, there's the garage door and the two doors.
It's this, it's this end unit, the mechanicals.
Yeah, because that has a garage, but it's flipped around.
So you're seeing the end of the house. Is this in the right location relative to...
Yep.
It must be looking like from this, this angle here.
It's exactly right. It's looking this way.
Yeah, so I just, I took a couple of like where the Service Master was, but I didn't actually go and take, I should have taken the, the front on one. But it's basically, all the garage doors are identical. They all look like this. There are no...
They all have the bead, but no crossbuck.
Yeah.
They have bead?
It's a beaded panel on that.
Isn't it like this?
That's the beaded panel, yeah.
I can't tell that's beaded.
Yeah, that doesn't look like a...
It actually looks horizontal.
Yeah.
It's a vertical bead on the panel.
It doesn't look like it.
There's a little bit of a vertical bead in there. It doesn't come out very well on the picture, but it is there.
Doesn't come out from a distance either.
But it's, it's got these strips in between, it's very rectangular.
Yeah, I saw the rectangle, or I can see the rectangular strips.
The part in between does have like a beadboard.
Well, and then the doors were supposed to have like the lights over them, like the...
They just haven't been installed yet.
Okay.
The gooseneck.
Yeah.
Is this still under construction?
Yeah.
And the doors were supposed to have that vertical bead.
Beadboard look to, right? Are they, are they beadboarded?
They aren't bead, the ones that are there aren't beadboarded.
Those are six-panel or something like that?
That's a two-panel.
Two-panel?
Well, the original plan had a ton of detail, but it seems like... It's gone. That detail isn't there anymore.
Right. And again, as you, as you said, this peak doesn't match up anymore like it, like it was in the eleva, you know, where it's in the elevation.
The window's in a different place.
You know what? Is, the reason that window is a different height?
Is there a reason?
Yeah.
No, there's no particular reason, it's just the layout of the, the frame are put in that, that spot.
Is there something upstairs there?
That's a second-floor mezzanine.
Second-floor mezzanine.
And why didn't you build it the way it was laid out?
Cost overrun, ran out of money, so I shaved back on a few spots.
Well, unfortunately, it looks like you shaved back on sort of the, the exterior look and feel. And I think it would have, well, you know, it's hard to address it now because it's after the fact. You know, it would have been much better if, if you had that conversation before, you know, things got cast in stone here. Because this looks like...
I can, I can add the, the crossbuck on the garage door, that's an added detail, I can do that.
Yeah. What about the dormers?
The dormers are, would be an expensive proposition.
The problem is, I think that, you know, this is what it looks like today and 10 years from now, it's still going to look like this. It's going to have this sort of very flat, unadorned look to it.
This is the expanse of the walls that we were trying to avoid.
Exactly. Yeah, I think we were concerned that on the Service Pro side, when I was at the, the Design Review Committee meetings, was that to present that and try to break up that elevation, and now that elevation is now one big, large facade.
Wait for solar panels.
One of the details that's not on there yet was a fake barn door on that one side facing Service Master that Design Review decided to, you know, add in. I just haven't built it yet. It's to make, to break up that facade.
But that's not on the elevation though. That was, are these approved?
It wasn't drawn in.
It wasn't drawn on these approved, or these plans, or these elevations.
Right.
Oh, is that something that's not here?
That's what he's saying. Was that going to be in between the...
In between the two, those two entrance doors on that one side to break up the shingles.
So the ones that were the, in the center, where probably the doors have the largest space between them?
Exactly, yep.
Like right in here?
So that gets replaced?
No, he's saying that there'd be like a fake barn door between those two.
Between those two. Where are we looking here?
This is this elevation.
This elevation?
Yep.
Does that face into the court?
That faces Service Master.
Yeah, as you're coming up Ford Place.
Countryway?
Yeah, you can see it from Countryway, pretty...
Yeah, that's the elevation you see, right?
Yep. That's the main one, I think, at least.
That's the one that should be fixed. But that's not this one?
No.
Where's this one?
Inside.
Yeah, that's if you go around the corner here, sorry. I didn't take that picture.
I don't know how you fix this.
Well, what's the, like when we have Laura, a particular building that's been approved that doesn't meet what's, was the elevations or the plans, I mean, what's our recourse?
Well, we are working closer with the Building Department on the Certificate of Occupancy and as I understand it, you don't have that yet. So you could, you know, you could ask Mr. O'Keefe to do whatever fixes you agreed to between the two of you and then just say that before the Certificate of Occupancy, those have got to be done.
Well, I would say having the garage doors with the trim would go a long way. I think the dormers, again, maybe that are, that aren't there, that there's three, right? That, that to me is not as big a deal as this facade personally, because you see that, like the three dormers you'd only see if you drive up Ford Place and actually into the little courtyard, whereas this you see like every day or driving by Countryway, that's what you see.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Right?
Right.
Wherever you had this is what you see, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I can add that roof cheek and along that edge to give it that detail with the break in the wall, if that would help, I know it would look more like that picture.
I think it would.
Yeah, I think that would help, it'd break up that facade. And then like you said, if there was a barn door in the center...
Let me see that. Can I see that picture again?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I was trying to get this a little bit. So this is on...
How do you put the roof cheek in there?
Service Master's.
You'd have to put this roof line here, along, although it'd be like so close to the windows there.
Between the two floors, yeah.
This, this feels to me like, first of all, it's beyond my area of expertise. You know, is this something we should ask the Design Review Committee to work at, look at and give us some recommendations?
I'm not sure that that's really necessary.
Well, I don't know how, putting the roof cheek in here doesn't work.
In one sense, the horse has escaped.
That's exactly right.
And maybe putting up the barn door would help mitigate this along with some type of landscaping. It's just, as you pointed out, it's unfortunate that when things were getting a little bit rough, you didn't come in to us initially and it's virtually done and there's, you know, as Richard has asked Laura, you know, what can we do? And I think that you need to figure this out, how to make this look the way it's supposed to look. I mean, I can, I don't know. It's just unfortunate, truly unfortunate that this has happened.
I just think we're, we're dealing with what we got now and I'm, we're not interested in probably having you tear the whole building down and start over, right?
Nope.
But we want the effect that we deserve.
But we would like to get the effect particularly from the road, and I'm not discounting that we shouldn't have a little better look in the courtyard either, but particularly from the road, we ought to have a better look and feel than what you see today. And, well, I'll see to the architects on, on the board here. I don't know exactly what that is.
Yeah.
I don't know how to get this.
Well, you're right. Having that rid or the roof eve go along there, I think is not going to work anymore because the windows are down lower, according to this picture anyway.
You'd have to drop it down to here.
Yeah, and it wouldn't quite look correct.
Another thing maybe Mr. O'Keefe could do is go back to his architect and just, you know, take some pictures and show them and just say, hey, you know, can you come up with some ideas for me to how to make this like a little more of that rustic barn?
Right. Well, first of all, were you dealing with an architect?
Yes.
Yes, that approved, it's on the name.
Pre-designed.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I mean, that would, if there was something that kind of as mitigation or that they could redo like that elevation, maybe not the entire structure, but just that elevation.
Yeah, figure out some way to, to try to get the...
Break it up.
Yeah, it looks like a big tall wall, particularly with that gable end, the way it is in there. It's very flat and I think that's what we were trying to avoid in the first place. And I'd be happy to take, if, if your architect wants to do, to take a crack at it, I'd probably still want to get the Design Review Committee to look at it, just to say, you know, we think that's as good as you can do here. I just know I'm beyond my capabilities as an architect at this point.
Well, I think there's definitely some things that can be done there. Like you said, the barn door, I don't think the roof line can be really modified much. But there might be some other things that could be done.
Yeah, I don't know if you can do something under the windows.
Well, the space along that wall to the property line is not very deep at all.
H V maybe?
And, you know, you feel like you'd step out the door into nowhere.
These doors?
Yep.
Well, those doors were always there, I guess, part of the elevation.
I understand. But maybe some type of landscaping?
Yeah, landscaping could potentially certainly improve this a lot.
Could do a little...
Stonework or something?
Maybe some hip roofs over the doors or a continuous lower roof over the doors or something that makes it almost look porchy. I don't know. I think we're going to need you, John, to come up with some ideas on how to improve the look and the feel here.
Okay.
And I, my suggestion would be to focus on this particular facade, you know, this elevation basically, which is the...
I think it's north, right?
Is this the north elevation?
Yes.
This one here?
Okay, yep. Making it less of a blank wall.
Yes, yeah, I mean, you know, maybe there is something that you could put in here that, that changes that look and feel. I just, I'm not going to try to design it here because I would do something very bad looking.
Well, I think it'd be, again, if you went to your architect and said, what can we do? Like here's the, here's the, here's where the plans as they drew them up, here's the actual structure, you know, how can we, as Steve was saying, how can we make it look as close to this as possible?
Okay.
We don't have a motion for you, but maybe you want to, you know, if you're all, when you're all ready, if you want to approve his request to eliminate the shed dormers on that side?
I'd like to see the new design first.
Not about to approve anything.
I'd like to know where we ultimately are going to end up before we, we approve any chances at this point, okay?
This has a ways to go.
And I mean, tonight, what was your, you were primarily saying just to eliminate the dormers, that's what you were asking for?
Yes.
And was that it? Or what about the trim and all the other?
Well, that was, that was part of it, but I mean, if you feel strong about the trim, I have no problem with the trim on the garage doors, that's not that big of a deal.
So I, I think that's the challenge. I don't, I don't think we're going to vote on anything tonight. We need, we need more information. And I guess I would offer up, if your architect wants to talk to somebody on the Design Review Committee before he gets too far down the road, that might actually be a useful thing to do, right?
Because we had at least, I mean, I think I was part of two meetings of the Design Review Committee concerning this particular structure. Maybe there was more, I can't quite remember, but I think there was at least two. So I mean, they, they put in the time, they put in the effort, they came up with a good design and that's why I want to make sure that, you know, if, what's the point of having a Design Review Committee if you just say, well, I'm not going to do it?
Well, yeah, and that's why I'm suggesting we actually go back to them and say, okay, we've now got a situation that we didn't expect to be in, but, you know, I don't want to call it putting lipstick on a pig, but, you know, I'd like to make sure that they have input to have this done ultimately.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Right? And because even if you submitted it to us, we'd probably turn around and give it to them anyway to look at, right? So it might be good to try to...
Start there.
Consult with them now.
So is there a timeframe on that, that we should be?
Well, actually, they are meeting on May 18th, which is a quick turnaround, but where you're not asking your architect to design a whole building, you're just asking...
Just that one elevation?
Look at the one elevation and add something, maybe they could come up with something pretty quickly.
Okay.
And we're probably going to be getting the agenda for that ready, I would say, if not tomorrow, then probably Monday or Tuesday is the latest.
Okay. So if I get that to you by Tuesday?
Okay.
Good. I would just say, and I know this is closing the barn door, but in the future, not just
we've now got a situation that we didn't expect to be in. But, you know, I don't want to call it putting lipstick on a pig, but, you know, I'd like to make sure that they have input to have this done ultimately.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Right? And because even if you submitted it to us, we'd probably turn around and give it to them anyway to look at, right? So it might be good to try to...
Start there.
Consult with them now.
So is there a timeframe on that, that we should be?
Well, actually, they are meeting on May 18th, which is a quick turnaround. But where you're not asking your architect to design a whole building, you're just asking...
Just that one elevation?
Look at the one elevation and add something. Maybe they could come up with something pretty quickly.
Okay.
And we're probably going to be getting the agenda for that ready, I would say. If not tomorrow, then probably Monday or Tuesday is the latest.
Okay. So if I get that to you by Tuesday?
Okay.
Okay.
Good. All right, that's good. I would just say, and I know this is closing the barn door, but in the future, not just for you, John, but for anybody who's, you know, getting these kinds of approvals, what we would expect if you ran into this situation is to come back to the planning board, at least make a phone call to the town planner to say, hey, I've got a problem here. This is going to create a change. We, we really don't like doing after-the-fact, you know, approvals after the die is cast.
I understand, sorry about that.
And, and it's, I'm saying this just not for your benefit, but for the listening audience out there as well, that we are trying to avoid the situation where people come in asking for forgiveness as opposed to asking for permission.
Right.
And as Richard pointed out, you know, people spend a lot of time and effort to try to get to this. And it's not a good precedent to set, to say, well, we'll ignore all that, and then we'll just come back and have them sign off at the end to what I did, right?
Well, and also, I won't name the specific development, but, you know, we had another developer come in recently that did want to do some changes, design changes. And we talked and discussed it, and we decided not to. So that was, but they did the right thing by came, coming before us and saying, we have these changes that we want to submit. Is that acceptable based on the plans and the elevations?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Well, it depends whether, well, at some point, but he's got to make the design review committee, right? So, yeah, you could pencil them in, assuming they, they hit all their, their timing. What's the next available?
It's time on May 25th or June 8th. Can we wait and see what needs to be changed to plans and get the, you know, if we need a new plan or whatever it is before we schedule it and just to make sure we can do it?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine with me. What's, what's your timing in terms of occupancy?
Oh, I got a few more months. I'm still, you know...
Okay, so you've got the time to make this one.
Yeah. Like, I haven't even finished that, that side of the building with the, you know, there's still some things that have to be installed, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think the town residents should pay any price for his cost overruns. Sorry about that.
Right.
Well, it's true. I mean, it's better, you know, we definitely want people to be in business in this town, right? So I understand that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Aesthetically, though, we'd be paying for it for the next 10, 20 years.
Yeah, it could be a million, millions.
20 or more, probably.
So that's not, I mean, I don't want to crucify him.
Just to you or to...
No, I think that's why we really need him to come back with the proposal.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree.
I agree with you there.
I'm not very sympathetic just because of cost difference.
I'm not either.
No. Me, too.
I'm not either, but I also don't want to put a spoiled businessman in town out of business either.
No, there's a need for what he's doing.
Exactly. So if we can find the right approach, then we should be okay, but, yeah.
Well, and we've, as we know, Ford, I'm sorry, Union Street has been coming before us several times for a similar kind of contractor space. And we've been very stringent but fair with them. I want to have, hold them to the same standards for a place.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And if you suggest if it can be changed arbitrarily, then I can do it in the first place.
Right.
Okay, we're running a little late here, but we've got 259, or 529, 531 countryway stormwater complaint. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Matt Polier-Vito from Rosensian Company, representing the owner of the property, Paul Sharon. He received a phone call from Laura a few weeks ago. There's some complaints from some of your members about the work that was ongoing on the site, specifically some flooding from standing water. And this, this original site plan was approved by the planning board by Sitech Engineering Company, and which approved with the kind of drawwork to service two homes. And these are the chambers for the stormwater, and there's another subsurface chamber here. The concept on the original plan, which I have on the back of the board, was to build the two houses here with the septic systems in the rear, and there'd be swales around the perimeter to take the water down into this chamber here. And the water from the roof would go into these two chambers here. The plans admitted, you never addressed the septic systems in the back. All they showed was a conceptual area for the septic system. These leacheries are larger than what they had shown on their plan. So we went out here and we did the perk test, and we designed the septic systems, and they were approved. These systems will be mounted, and this blue area will be the area of the sand fill that we bring in. So these, these blue areas act like a sponge as opposed to virgin soils that are in there that are on contact glacial tilt. So when the water hits the surface, some of it's going to go into the lawn and the grass. And the rest of it, there'll be a slope down, and these arrows are the swales that go around the property. In the, in the original plan, envisioned the same flow of water. The purpose was to get it down into a catch basin here that go into this underground chamber. And the roof areas from the houses would go into these. These, the footprint of this house, and these houses are the existing foundations that are out there today. The size of these houses, the footprint is 25% less than what you approved. So the homes that were built were not as big as the ones approved. The driveway, common driveway, is in the same location.
Can I, can I stop you there for a second? Because I want to make sure, I appreciate getting the grounding on like what the design is, but can you tell me what the problem is?
Yes. There are, there are homes on the uphill side of Aberdeen Drive. And these are the contours that we got from the roof alert. What happens is, and I have some photographs where you look at, but the ground from the property slopes uphill in all directions. So the water from lease, from lease properties flow onto our property and eventually down into the countryway. This is the top of the hill, this is the bottom of the hill. And what we're doing here is, because we, we have to pick the grade up. So the elevation at the top of this system is around 81. This contour right here is 78. So what happens is, the top of this system is three feet higher than the grade on this existing lot. But what happens is, we come off the top, we slope down, and we slope back up to the wall, and there's a swale here. The purpose is to take the water coming this way and this way off the system and bring it around the side of the lot. We don't know where the flooding was on this property here. The photographs show in the area of these test pits that we have, you can see some small puddles of water where the test pits were, which you expect to see. This side has been, the vegetation's been removed. There's some film in here now, but it hasn't been spread out. These, these systems are not in place yet. They, they still have to be built. But there are puddles of water in the picture in the area where we have the test pits. Because that soil's been excavated, it's loose, so that'll take the water and hold it. The areas around it are dry after rainstorms. And what happens is, the water continues to flow downhill at present time. I'm not aware of where the flooding was on the property here or if they had problems.
Is, is there somebody who's aware of that?
Well, what I point out is, the groundwater elevations, that in the back of this property, based upon soil evaluations for the septic systems, the groundwater is down about two and a half feet, which is what you expect to see in the soils in this area. It's on glacial tilt, that, that's pretty consistent. These basements, just by eye, look like they're four to five feet into the ground. So assuming that's the case, they would clearly be under the groundwater. But none of this work here is causing any problems to lease properties because they're uphill. So what, what we did was to prepare this plant for final construction. That does show the swales, the septic system plan did have these swales on it. And that's, that's what we added to the plan.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I must be a little tense this evening.
Excuse me.
What is the problem? What, where, where was the flooding? How is it related to this work? Do, do we know? Is somebody here who does know?
I don't know.
Okay, maybe, maybe you could come on up, I'd speak into the microphone. Okay, great. Come on up, because I need to understand what the problem is. I think we all need to understand what the problem is.
The green lawn areas are the houses uphill, and the dark side is our site, which is in the area.
Okay. So... Let's turn the floor over. Please identify yourself.
Sure, I'm Stephen Tierney. I live at 66 Aberdeen Drive. It's the house to the left of the, of the ongoing development on the plan here. And I, I had come out to speak with Laura initially to just voice my concerns. It's sort of a, from my point of view, it's a multi-pronged issue. One is that we haven't looked at the backside of the original plans, which I had seen for the first time when these houses were listed for sale. But the homes themselves, probably due to the soils, as I understand, are raised out of the ground much more than was planned for originally and was approved by the town. And additionally, the vegetation, which on the line, on the plan here, is still shown as being to remain.
So I'm assuming, I'm a landscape architect by trade, not a civil engineer. I'm a corporate civil engineer as well, versed in issues. But this is the proposed vegetation to remain, which I imagine is factored into the stormwater calculations in the design. All of this vegetation, which was supposed to be a 50-foot depth from Scott's residence here, this is all been removed. All of the vegetation, the entire site's been removed.
Been cleared.
So our concern is that...
I don't, I don't want to stop your whole speech here, but what happened? Are you getting, are you getting flooding?
Flooding anywhere. We, we have flooding issues that we're dealing with already, just based on probably the groundwater.
Gotcha.
But what I, what I am concerned with, two things Laura spoke about. One is the aesthetic nature of vegetation removal. Two is the stormwater results of removing that vegetation. And, you know, these, these swales are being shown as created in an area where trees were supposed to remain. So that's all gone. And I have my doubts as a professional that these swales will actually be effective to move surface water off the site and around. So we have concerns about skeetos, about, you know, water coming onto our property and those types of things. In addition to just the unsightly vegetation removal, which has not been remedied. So that's sort of where our concerns lie. And lastly, maybe somewhat less important, is that the buildings are that much higher and sort of dominating the area now, which is out of context with the rest of the residences.
I don't think that's out of context at all, because...
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Scott Terrio. I live in 62 Aberdeen Drive. It's the one on the sort of the middle there.
To the middle?
Yeah. So it seems to me kind of the same as the previous, you know, hearing that you had here with the builder that's already completed everything and asking for forgiveness. If you look at the houses now, you can see where the, where the ground is going to end up because they've just been raised so far out of the, out of the ground. And so if they truck in, you know, I don't know how much land and sand and put these septic systems in, where is the water going to go? I mean, it may not end up in my basement, but it might end up in all of our backyards. And our backyards are going to be swimming pools.
Okay, and, yes?
I'm John Etnin, 58 Aberdeen.
Okay, so we got everybody.
I'm the architect. Well, I've had flooding from this here, my whole, my backyard. I think Laura went out and took some pictures of it back. It was, it's never been like this since I've been here for 32 years. I have water sitting in the backyard by my septic system, and this is the first time. So I'm concerned that...
Could you just kind of go up and show me where it is?
Yeah, I think John's land is sort of the lowest of the three of ours.
Yeah, so I mean, like you said, I did have water in my basement also. I have more water than I've had in my basement. And I don't get it every year, I get it every three or four years. So in the backyard here, I have, there's a storm wall here. And this area here, which I've never had water, there was sitting water all along the backyard. And my septic system is in the back here, too. So, you know, my leachery field is actually. So it all runs down this way. So everything is going to become, like he said, it's going to be raising it. And everything's going to go this way and come back into my yard, mostly this way here and probably spots.
And Mr. Mayor Vio, is the drainage in place that's supposed to catch that now? And it's not doing it?
No, one of the things I point out, this, this site is not fully constructed. None of this grading you see here is in place. But you, you can...
So, so my question is, why is water then sort of directed and running off into their yards? I mean, we, we approved the stormwater plan that, it was not approved that you could flood yards during construction.
And we are funny here.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we are.
If you look at the elevations, this is the 80-foot contour.
I'm, I'm looking at what the experience is. It sounds like it is happening.
Well...
Is, is that wrong?
You're wrong, because it's not happening. I was...
You didn't have any water in your yard?
I've been just saying...
I'm wearing my hand in my basement.
Okay.
So it sounds like you think it's not happening, but it sounds like the neighbor's saying he has it.
Laura, did you take the pictures of, after six days afterwards?
I did, and I didn't send those around. They weren't terribly dramatic. I didn't go into your yard, actually.
Okay, and that was back in my backyard?
I was in the yards off Aberdeen.
It was saturated with the water, and this was six to seven days afterwards. That has never ever happened.
Yeah, even after a dry spell, they're still standing.
I mean, we really haven't had any rain, and this is...
So what are you doing right now to prevent water from, from running off the property?
This site right now, along the walls, is down with the original elevation. Nothing's been done. There's no swales here. The, the grade is going in this direction right now.
Can you point out in these pictures or these photos, the area?
I believe this is wall here. This wall here.
You said the homes were built higher than originally approved?
Oh, they must be four, must be four or five feet higher.
I can talk to that.
Okay. Let's just get, I'm just trying to get oriented here so I know, like, what's, what's what and what.
From these photos, there's a lot of standing water on the construction site.
Standing water's in here, which is right here, which is where the test pits were. Once that soil's dug up and loosened, then the water's going to sit there after rainstorms as opposed to the area around.
Okay, so I've, I've heard everything so far. Let's, let me turn it over to Laura for a minute.
Well, could, could I just address some of the...
In a minute, in a minute. I'd like to hear from Laura first, and then we'll, we'll talk about that.
So this was a common driveway that the planning board approved that a few years ago. And what happened was, when it was approved, they didn't realize how high the groundwater was and what was going to happen as far as grading once they put the septic systems in. They also didn't have, well, I'm looking at this, but that's not, you know, that's not the plan we're talking about. We're talking about the plan you approved, which is by a company called Sitech. They also didn't have the houses in very realistic spots, considering that they're sort of estate lots and you would want them as far back as, as you could get them, most likely. So the septic system plan came through the health office, was approved. I signed off on the building permit thinking I was signing off based on the stormwater plan, never having seen the septic system plan. Now, we're starting to, you know, I'm looking at that there's a board I found out about in the health department where you go and you look at, you know, who's getting septic systems each week. And I'm just going to have to go and check it. But there was no information that I got. And the grade changed extremely back there. One of the houses is eight feet higher than it was going to be, so...
Eight feet higher?
That's what I got. The grade is like from...
Those are stories.
Eighty-three, I believe, in one spot. But anyhow, the grade is much higher. The fill hasn't been brought back, the septic systems aren't in. But it's going to be filled quite high compared to where it is now. And, and the grade is really going to change back there. So when this problem came up, I did contact our consulting engineer, Merrill Associates. And I said, well, you know, there's been this extreme change, what seems to me to be a pretty extreme change to the grade. You know, what do you, this is what the plan looks like. I went back and forth with Paul's office about whether they would do anything to direct stormwater back towards the front lots or what they would do. And we, I, I just got, everything is going to work, don't worry about it. So, you know, that sounds good, but it's not really quite sufficient. So I went to Merrill, and they said there really should be swales, you know, going around the outside. I exchanged an email with Paul yesterday, and I still didn't get, I, I got something like, well, you know, there'll be swales, everything will be fine, but no plan. Finally, today, we had a site visit out there. I had a site visit with Paul. Paul told me that there was a plan showing swales. I did get the plan.
Is that this plan?
That's... That's this plan, yeah. And I believe you all got that. I do have copies of it I can bring around. But, you know, I think the problem was kind of a breakdown of communication about what was going to happen as far as these swales, and was it just something people were talking about? Or was there a plan that was actually going to be carried out?
So, do we have a redesign of what was originally approved? And that's what we're looking at right here?
You do. And because I just got the plan of the swales this afternoon, I didn't have, you know, Merrill didn't have a chance to look at it. They, they have not looked at it. I don't have the money for them to look at it. So it, it may be that it will be okay. I mean, there's a swell along the south side of this, you know, house on the bottom here that may be adequate to protect this or happen in. You know, we don't really know. I'd like to have, you know, I think it'd be a...
We need, we need to have that reviewed, and by the way, I'd like to make sure we have updated stormwater calculations that go with this redesign as well, and that those are reviewed as well.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to, you know, ask the engineer for that.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you're representing the developer, right? So you can, you can ask him that. But we didn't approve this design. You proposed it. We want to know that...
Some of it you did, but not the stuff in the back. You know, I, I'd like to take a moment to add some more comments here. The elevation system that this is on, is on mean sea level, which is required by the Board of Health. The elevation system the SciTech plan was on was an assumed elevation. So if you look at these contour lines here, if you look at the ones on SciTech plan, it's, they aren't the same according to them. But as far as the homes go, this is the SciTech plan that was done.
Right, and we have that in our packet.
What this shows is, the pink is where the house is. The front house, this big block here is the proposed house block. So we've only pulled the house back, we know anywhere from, I guess, seven to 15 feet in back here on this one. This one is probably exactly the same as where this was. But on the SciTech plan, you can see that the concept was to swell around these lots and bring the water around here. What they show on your plan here is a, the location of the septic system, which is a schematic location here and here. This orange is where the actual system is, based upon our soil test pits. They never took into account the groundwater elevations in this area here when they laid these houses up. And the same happened here as well. This is where they show the proposed system. This system is too close to the wall because of the grading you'd have to have in order to meet the breakout requirements. That's why it was pushed back into this area here. And again, what we're doing is, we're, we're going to slow down around the wall here.
I hear all that, but I, I hear what you're saying. I hear there are differences. Just bear with me, just bear, just bear with me for a minute. I hear all of that. What you're essentially saying is things have changed. Well, if they've changed, then we would like to see the updated design. If this is it, fine. We'd like to know that the stormwater calculations have been redone so that they meet our requirements. And if we need support, monetary support, to have our independent engineer do that, that's what we need you to ask your client to provide.
But what I want to stress is that when your engineer reviews this, he's going to see what I'm telling you and I'm pointing out to the neighbors. A...
And then I'm sure he'll tell us that.
No. A, you can't send water on someone else's property for no reason, irrespective of whether or not you have stormwater regulations.
Right.
The other thing is that the concept of the grading here is what they intended to have even in the back. If you were to analyze, they're probably, they just show proposed contours in the back, but they never go back this far, because they didn't have elevations in the ground line, so they couldn't determine where the systems were. The reason the houses are up is because it's a gravity system that goes back to these mounts here. This is where the houses look high in the air compared to the street and even the backyards. For example, the garage elevation here was going to be about one, one foot above the existing grade. The garage elevation on that house is actually, garage elevation here is about, about four feet above the grade. So the reason is, is because this mound is anywhere from three to five feet above the ground behind it.
The garage has stepped down from the main residence portion on a house two quite significantly, probably four or five feet.
Yeah.
Can I just add something here? I, I don't disagree with, with anything this gentleman's saying. I mean, the natural drainage pattern of this area is to go down to Country Way. And so the original design that was done, you know, picked up the small amount of drainage that was created by the added residences. But what's happened is the ground is being lifted so much because of the high groundwater is that it's now a much larger diversion that the water needs to make its way around. And I'm not confident that's working, but also with the elimination of all the trees and the roots that soak up water, there's much different runoff rates associated with the trees versus lawn, which is what I'm assume, assuming is proposed to be replaced there. So does that mean that you need additional chambers down by Country Way where everything's collected? That's what needs to be reviewed. We don't want standing water trapped in lawn, with soggy lawn in the backs of these residences, which runs right along, vast majority of this is along our properties. And, you know, we don't want mosquitoes and whatever else comes with that out there. I mean, it is a real concern nowadays.
So we hear your concern. And we're concerned as well. We don't like to get in these situations, as I said earlier, where we're dealing with problems that we hopefully could have avoided. But we have the situation that we have now, so I think the prudent thing to do is to have it reviewed, and have the stormwater calculations reviewed, and do what's necessary to meet our storm, stormwater regulations.
Also, I just mentioned real briefly, you know, as you mentioned earlier about the whole number of many feet that were going to be undisturbed, woodlands or whatever. So now, at least my vantage point in the backyard is just wide open. We're just staring at these two huge houses behind us. So from an aesthetics point of view, it's really not, not the plan.
Have you guys discussed providing some screening vegetation back in there?
I did talk to the developer about that, and he sounded like he was willing to do it when I first talked to him. And I think where this is probably going to come back to you all again, that would be something that, you know, you could...
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that at the same time.
These houses are, are very large, even for the large new homes in situ. These are definitely on a large, empty scale.
The thing too, that these homeowners themselves, they would want something in there too, instead of looking at houses, so.
But they, the challenge there may be that you want the screening sort of planted on your property, so you control it, as opposed to...
Well, it doesn't, I just want the water taken care of and to look decent.
Well, we would like that as well. The issue about where the screening gets planted, the homeowners and developer can sort of work that one out. Sometimes people want it on their property so they know that the new owner doesn't cut it down and, or trim it or whatever, you know, that kind of thing, so. But I do think that's one of the things that... Okay, we've, we've heard a lot. Let me turn it over to my fellow board members here.
I'm amazed that it's come to this, but not surprised. At any rate, it has to be fixed, and we have to deal with it. And I'm sure that we will see everybody here again. And it's, it's truly, truly unfortunate. And one of the things that struck me as I drive down Country Way and look at this with the, sort of the gravel that's out front, is that it just appears that the driveway goes up and then it goes back down again. And that could just be an optical illusion. I don't know. Maybe I'll put on my wellies and go march, march around back there and see what's going on. But that could just be...
Well, presumably this plan...
What?
I think it's pretty much just going up.
He's got, he's got crushed down in there?
Yeah.
That he put in, but no. I was out there today with Laura, and I got straight in.
Okay, but it just...
I did this.
I know, but it appears that the grading equipment and what have you seem to be lower than street. I don't, it, it could be an illusion, and probably. But at any rate, I think I will put my wellies on and go out and take a hike.
Great.
What, what's the work that's been done on the, the south side of Lot Two?
The south side of Lot Two?
Yeah.
Next to 50...
He's started to clear the vegetation. He's got the house in. He hasn't put the septic system in yet. Other than that, I don't think, he's brought some fill in the front of the house, so, you know, the, the two can work. I don't think he has, I was out there today, and I don't remember seeing anything with that. He's got some fill in the back of Lot One, you know, just in piles there, but not an awful lot. Most of the fill he's brought in is in the front of the lot, so the trucks could drive up to the garage to the workman and walk into the house in front of it. He hasn't done any of the work in the back that's shown on this plan. He's probably a month or two away from that.
So how are you going to manage the water in the meantime?
Well, right now, there's the contours of the existing land, or what you see on the existing plans out there, the water's running down toward the street. He hasn't, he doesn't have any fill in this area over here. He's got some against the house, but, you know, the water is still going this way. It's, it's coming down through the middle here, and some of it's coming around here. So, I mean, he hasn't done the final grading at all. He's running across it.
Right. But what's he doing in the meantime to prevent flooding due to construction onto the neighbor's property? Well, apparently, he's one property that's been flooded.
It's on his site.
It's not on his site, it's on the neighbor's site.
Just run it off his property.
Seen the flooding's down in here?
Yes.
Yes. And we've got two inches of rain coming in this weekend.
So if he needs to put a temporary swell in there to manage all this, then we should have him do that.
If he needs it, he could do it.
It's not a question of me.
It's not like he needs it.
It needs to be done.
I haven't, I haven't looked at this, so I can't answer the question.
Well, I think somebody better.
I don't even know what you're saying. I'm just saying, I am going to look at this since he brought the fill in here.
Well, I find, I find the, I find it compelling that he hasn't seen this before, and it's now happening, so.
If he sees a swell, he can put it in. It's pretty easy to do.
All right. Let's, let's make sure it gets done and gets done quickly.
I'll miss it on the fall.
Could I add also some erosion control around this, this...
Isn't there erosion control there now?
There's, there's a stone wall, right?
That won't stop anything.
But they're supposed to have erosion control.
Well, he had a Blanchard too, and, you know, it just...
Yeah. Stone wall isn't...
No, 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 I didn't mean, I'm sorry, that, I just meant that's the, the stone wall. So if there's hay bales or something running along there, or...
Doesn't look like there's anything.
Well, that looks like that might have been something at one point.
Distribute some hay across it like they did at Blanchard, which really did seem to work.
Mm-hmm.
If we dig the swell, swell's going to be lower in elevation than what's on, on the actual site plus the neighbor's site. Now, we, we dig it down a couple of feet, you know, swell it out, so the water is, is down lower.
Well, it also has to be directed so that it, it's not, it doesn't fill up and become a swimming pool and then just spill over, right? It's got to be, it's got to flow.
There's a slope to that land, so if I put the swell in there, it'd be a, on an actual slope.
So Laura, I just wanted to confirm, there was that no disturb zone, is that correct, on that whole property?
Oh, back when you approved the plan, it did show a non-disturb area of about approximately 20 feet, well, probably a little bit less than 20 feet in the back.
But now all that's gone.
It's supposed to be 50 feet next to Scott's house and 30 along mine. You can see the proposed tree lines here on the plans.
Did they clear right to the property line?
It's right to the, the lot line to lot line everywhere.
And that, that side of the house there is about three feet from my, my wall.
The grading is going to be, it's going to be all the way back to the back of the property.
It has to, if it's raised that high. So I'm assuming that this plan...
Right. But I guess we're, I'm trying...
This plan is going to have that grading, though, right?
Yeah.
This plan.
That's the new one.
Right? So this is the one that we need to, first of all, make sure it functions as adequate stormwater, and then we need to have somebody review it, right?
Yeah.
Both from a, a design point of view and a, and a stormwater calculations point of view too. We want to get that all validated. Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to make the point that if it was supposed to be non-disturbed, and he did just cut everything down to the, the property line, then it seems like there should be some mitigation that the developer does to make sure that that, some of that's put back.
Absolutely.
Where, okay.
He was, you know, he was very cooperative.
Okay.
At that, you know, in that first conversation. I mean, I'm assuming it's going to carry through, but I haven't had a conversation with him yet.
Okay. So if we end up, like, reviewing this, and, and I don't know if there's a vote that we have to take on that, or, I'm just saying that we should make sure that we put that in there.
I think when all this is, is, the calculations are done, they're shipped over to Merrill, they're going to come back to you all too, because you've got to approve the new plan of changes in it. I think in that vote, we'll add something.
Okay.
And hopefully the developer's going to be on board about screening.
It would be nice if he came back at the same time with a, a plan that showed what he planned to do for screening. You know?
One other small thing, which I think puts a wrench into this grading plan.
I would suggest that that, that the screening sort of be discussed with the neighbors so that everybody's kind of on the same page here.
One other thing that I didn't touch on earlier, when, this is the first time I'm seeing the plan here, is that the north side of the home on Lot One at the top of the page, that foundations must, I mean, it's already 10 feet of exposed foundation out there. Even with this proposed plan, there's likely still to be six to eight feet of exposed foundation there along that edge, which is visible to me in my backyard. We have chickens, so I'm out there all the time looking at that exposed foundation. So I don't know to what extent the, the builder can extend the siding down over that concrete or whatever it is, but it's, it's pretty ugly, to say the least. And that's a direct result of the grade being raised.
Well, maybe that's something you can, when we see you next, you can report on.
No, I, I did speak to him about that side, and he, he pointed it out to me, and we talked about a solution to it. Because I told him we did have to get a swell down in there, and you wouldn't be able to slope right from the house straight down. Too close, but. And just so I, I, I just want to make a point for the record, I'm not casting any dispersions on people did the other plan, but if we'd done this plan originally, one of the things we would have done in addition to the common driveway, where there's two houses there, we would have gone out in the back and done a perk test for two reasons. Number one, to make sure he had enough room to put a septic system in there, but also to see the size of it, because that would change what you had to do in the backyard. What they showed on their plan was a conceptual location for the system. Our systems are actually bigger than their conceptual ones, because it's based upon actual soil testing. But if we were designing a site, we would let the homeowner know or the developer that, you know, this is all, this project has to be looked at in totality, including the septic system. Because the grading on the back of their houses on their plan never took into account the mounting of that soil in the back, because they never did any test pits. The soils in the front were all sand and gravel. That wasn't, that wasn't the case in the back. Had they done that on the original plan, everything would have tied in perfectly.
But it will when we're done here, right? When we're done here, it's all going to be perfect too, right?
Right, no. It will be. No, we, we can solve the issues.
Any other comments?
We'll be coming back.
Yeah, we'll...
Okay. So, so on my list here is, we've got to get, assuming this is the new design, right? Or they need to confirm that this is the new design. We need this, and we need the updated stormwater calculations analysis submitted, and then we need, we're going to need some money from the developer so that we can pay our engineer to review it. We need that, right? We need you to address the, the new screening after the removal of the vegetation. This can all be done at the next, kind of the next iteration, if you will. The exposed foundation, what you're planning there, we'd like to hear that as well. And then, in between all that, having some kind of temporary swell here to prevent the flooding while this thing is under construction. And if it means additional erosion control as well, then we should have hay bales or whatever it is, plus the swell to manage the water during the construction period. That was everything on my list, or did I miss anything?
That's pretty comprehensive.
And can we put a time on the temporary swell here? Can we get this done in the next ten days?
As Ann said, it's going to rain.
Like tomorrow.
The question is, can they get to it tomorrow and get it done? If they could, that would be great, right? But let's make sure there's an outside limit so that we get this done.
Three, three days?
That's fine with me, as long as he can do it.
I'll check with, I'll let Paul know that, and he'll do his contractor on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Way behind the times, aren't we? So we have Autumn Woods, we have an informal discussion. Thank you, Steve. You're up. All set?
Sure, for the record, Steve V. Auckland, property owner of Autumn Woods. And this is a project that's been around for a long, long time. Probably around 2000 it might have started. I have a piece of property that's half in Norwell and half in Situate. And Bill might be the only one that might remember this. Originally.
He's not saying.
He's not saying it, yeah, yeah. He's got to go back in the memory banks to pull it up.
It was waters, but not because of what I did.
Originally, I came in with a subdivision plan that was referred to as the Valley. And I think it was an eleven lot plan that I've got here, this is an old sketch of it. The road entrance comes in from Norwell on Summer Street, over near Judges Hill, it's on the opposite side of the street, the Situate side of the street. And again, this is just an informal discussion. And I had to have a centerline radius waiver from the town of Norwell in order to bring the road in and curl up to where I wanted to do the, the homes over in this area here. And I came to the Situate planning board because the last probably hundred and fifty to two hundred feet of roadway with the cul-de-sac are in the town of Situate. There's no other connection into Situate because it's all surrounded by the South Swamp on the backside. And I had requested at that point whether the planning board would entertain a waiver for roadway length for a dead end that starts in the town of Norwell and ends up in the town of Situate. So it's almost like the reverse of the Laurelwood project, where they started in Situate, ended up in Norwell. The town of Norwell, so the planning board had kind of put it on hold at that point and said, get the approval from Norwell, come back, we'll discuss it further. Norwell chose not to give me the waiver for the centerline radius. I chose to turn it into a forty B project so that I didn't have to go back to the planning board in Norwell and got the approval of Autumn Woods, which was twenty-four units of housing, twelve in Situate, twelve in Norwell, rather than the original eleven lots. That project was approved by both Norwell and Situate Zoning Board of Appeals, and I received a comprehensive permit for the project.
What year was that?
I was, I didn't have gray hair then. It was a long time ago. Then the permits have expired, just so you know, the permits expired. Once I received those approvals, I got into a very, very lengthy lawsuit over property ownership, which ultimately, six years later, I received a decision from the judge that said that the property was mine, it was not the neighbor's property. And then I went through a five-year legal battle on counterclaims, which everybody else was found guilty on every charge that we had. And I'm now back at the table, and I am ready to develop the property again. My developers that were going to do the forty B project, because I'm not a forty B developer, I'll tell you that, I'm in favor of affordable housing, but I'm not the guy that is going to go and build it, I don't have that type of a company. But I am prepared to do a conventional subdivision, you know, road, kind of like the Evangeline Drive one that we just did, a lot of the subdivisions I've been doing for thirty years. So I am back in front of you guys to ask if you would entertain the idea of me having approximately, I think it's about two hundred and fifty feet or so of roadway into Situate, again, if I'm successful on the Norwell side, which I think now things have changed a little bit in Norwell, and I'm actually working on a little different entrance with a neighbor that, well, I can tell you, and this is where the curve was where I couldn't get in. I have a verbal agreement with the neighbor who owns six acres here to purchase three acres of his property, which would eliminate that curve in the road. And I'm also going to start a discussion with the people that own this parcel right here, which would basically give me a straight road in. I have talked to the daughter-in-law of the woman that owns the property, she's very, she's probably eighty-something years old, the woman that owns it. And if this is not a possibility that the planning board wants to entertain, I'm not going to go upset her and talk about buying her land, because I don't need it. But if, if the planning board is inclined to work with me on an eleven lot subdivision, I will talk to the neighbors and see if they would prefer to see an eleven lot subdivision, or I would just go back to the forty B and have the zoning boards re-approve that. And I have talked to both of the town councils involved in the decision when the ZBA went through it, and they have indicated it should be a pretty simple process to go back through the forty B end of it. So I'm, to me, it doesn't make a big difference which way I go, but I probably would like to do a subdivision, I, I think it is going to have a little less impact, and some of the rules and regulations have changed, which might make it a little bit easier for me to do that conventional subdivision. If the board says, we don't want to see two hundred and fifty feet of subdivision road there, I'll, again, I'll just go back to the forty B again. So this is just a very quick informal, should I maybe go a little, couple steps further in looking towards the subdivision end of it rather than the forty B? That's all I'm looking for.
How long is the road going to be?
It depends on whether I actually purchase the, the entrance which makes it straight right here, Bill, which the Litchfield family owns. If I do that, I think I'm five hundred and eighty feet to the town line, and then another two hundred and, between two, two hundred and fifty feet, I think, or something like that in Situate. I don't know exactly, because I'm only working in a sketch plan. I'm hoping I'll be successful at purchasing that piece in the front, because they actually went for variance to try to build on that parcel, and the town of Norwell would not grant the variance. So there's, I'm hoping that the only use for that piece of property would be to become an entrance for, for a subdivision for me.
And that's the only access in and out?
Well, I have, I own access over on the side where that waiver was not granted, so I still can, I can come in as a, as a matter of right, once I purchase this three acres, I can come in this way with a road. And the cul-de-sac won't twist like this, it'll be more, more, a straighter road like this.
Then you wouldn't have access to those lots down below, right?
Yeah, I'd have access down in here, still have access down here. It changes the lot configuration, I know you actually received, I think by email, did they receive the other one that showed the entrance on?
No, he said, um, you didn't want that.
Oh, I didn't know if you had sent it to them or not, I think, Steve, I thought you had seen it. Do you care if I unfold it for two seconds? Ultimately, and I'm going to do this quickly, and again, I, I do not have the approval, oh, this is the same one. Nope, yeah, I got it right here. And again, I do not have the approval from the Litchfield family to do this. I'm going to attempt to do it if, if the planning board looks favorably on this. And basically, if you can see it there, each of the circles is where a home location would be.
Okay.
And the road entrance, you can see, pretty much would be straight coming down through their piece, if I can negotiate the deal with them.
How many houses in Situate?
Counting the halfhouses? It looks like six.
Are those halfway houses?
The town line has to be put exactly on the plan, again, this is just a sketch plan right here, so it looks like there would be six in Situate and five in Norwell. And this is conventional. Hold me to that, one could change either direction, but.
What are the lot sizes there?
They're all over an acre.
Over an acre?
Yeah. The Situate ones actually end up, some of them end up quite a bit larger, because the property goes down to the edge of the swamp.
And where do the services come from? There's separate services for Situate and Norwell?
Water, water will come from Norwell, which was.
For the Situate houses?
Even for the Situate houses. I've chatted with the Norwell Water Commissioners when I originally did this, as well as when the forty B went through the process, and Norwell said that they'll work with me on water. Again, it's not, nothing's a hundred percent yet, but they've indicated that they'll work with me on the water to provide it, and they said they've done it in other areas, so it shouldn't be a big problem. So really, there's no traffic impact to the town of Situate, it's really Norwell.
And this is septic?
It's, yeah, onsite septic. And if I do the subdivision, I'll probably be able to do individual septic systems. If I do the forty B, there's a, one large system that's back there that would be constructed. And it's all, that's all perked, so I'd have to go back and re.
How big is the forty B?
Twenty-four units.
Twenty-four units?
Twelve units in Situate and twelve units in Norwell.
Smaller, though?
Two thousand square foot home, approximately two thousand square foot homes. These are, these would be more like the type of subdivisions that we do around town, Sam Tilden Farm, that type of stuff. So there's really, it's, it doesn't have a lot of impact in the town of Situate, I mean, against far services or anything like that, I mean, it's, it's pretty much Norwell.
Would the, would the police and fire service, would that be from Norwell?
Well, if there's a Situate call, it will come from Situate, just like in Laurelwood, if there's a call to back of Laurelwood, Norwell goes down First Parish Road, and they go into a little section of Situate and off into the subdivision. So there's a couple of different roads that do that, I think, in town.
Where would the children in the back forty go to school? Situate?
Situate, yeah.
So there'd be two, a Norwell school bus and a Situate school bus?
And the Situate school bus, and I'm not sure it still does it, but when I first looked at this, the Situate school bus actually went from Cedar Street in Situate down Summer Street to First Parish Road, so they went right by the entrance of it anyway, so it's a matter of just having one Situate stop there. And at the time, that was not a problem as far as the Situate buses were concerned. Again, I don't know what it is now, because this is the first stop for me, is if you guys don't like the idea, I'm, I'm done, right here, that's fine. So obviously, I need to have support to continue to go forward with a conventional subdivision.
And the regulations, therefore, the entire street, not just the part that's in Situate, right? Meaning that the, the length?
Yeah, a dead end is defined, so it doesn't matter if it starts in another town.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
The dead end length is defined as from the nearest through street to the end of the roadway.
Doesn't matter what town it is in, okay.
No, doesn't matter, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say this is only a two hundred foot road, so I don't need the waiver. You know, obviously, you guys are going to define this as whatever the total length of road is to Summer Street.
Okay. And, and how does, how does Norwell deal with that?
As far as what?
Do they have a similar regulation?
Oh, absolutely.
And what's the length?
I, I believe their roadway length is, is six hundred foot dead end, and I think I'm five hundred and eighty-four feet till I get to Situate. So I don't need the waiver from the town of Norwell, I need it from the town of Situate.
So they don't recognize the length of the, the full length of the street, only the length of the street in Norwell?
That's all what's in Norwell, right. So it's, it's different because of which town lies in which area.
So ultimately, it's about two hundred and fifty additionals, what you're asking for roughly?
Yeah.
About eight hundred and fifty feet altogether.
Yeah, it's, it's about eight, if, if I can get the entrance at the front from the Litchfield family, it's probably going to be about an eight hundred foot road.
And if not?
If not, it ends up a little bit longer over in here, but what happens is I don't have any houses for the first distance of road, so it's still only eleven homes. It's almost like the Arrowood project out in the West End that we did. The first three to four hundred feet, all you do is you're just driving down through the woods, and then it opens up to the homes once you get in. So when we did that, the planning board looked favorably on that, because we weren't adding additional houses, it still would have been basically the same amount of houses. So, and.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I just wanted to mention, first of all, that this is a fairly environmentally sensitive piece of land, particularly the back area, because it butts up to the South Swamp, which is the headwaters. I'm not sure about the, I think that some of the Situate supply, they primarily.
Cohasset.
The Arrowood reservoir has tributaries that start here and they wind it, you know, up to Cohasset. So, and it's also some, something that's been, an area people have been interested in protecting. There was a big CPA article back about ten years ago, the survey of the South Swamp, but they could never figure out who owned it, and the property lines were, were crazy, so they, they dropped the project, which hardly ever happens with CPA. But the reason they wanted to do that was so that perhaps eventually the town could buy pieces of it that were owners unknown and so on and so forth. So you've got this environmental sensitivity, you've got this decent-sized piece of land, you've got the need for some labors. I don't know if this is something that the board would even be interested in, but I'm just kind of, and maybe it's something Steve has already thought about and promoted as an idea, but I wondered about the idea of a flexible open space development, or is there a problem in that maybe Norwell, I know they have some kind of open space development, but I don't know if it's as flexible as the Situate by law.
Well, they, they do, they do have an open space bylaw in Norwell.
Save some of the land along as a buffer along that South Swamp, is what I'm getting at.
Well, what happens, if you see the topography on the site out there, when you get to the Situate end of it, it really drops off the hill, and then there's a flat area when you get out towards the swamp. And I think the only thing that we've got proposed anywhere near that area is a detention basin, because it's near the bottom of the hill. So that's where we want the stormwater to go. So the, the homes in Situate are going to be up, up the hill from the South Swamp. So I don't think there's really a need to make it an open space development, there's nothing that's proposed, you know, around the back of the property. It's a special permit, but I don't mind working with conditions on a subdivision, so it's.
Is the, is the intent then, from where your property line is to where any development is, is there going to be a buffer of any kind there?
Yeah, I think, well, part of, the, the lower part of it ends up in the town of Situate floodplain.
Yeah.
At elevation a hundred. I think there's actually, there's an issue with the floodplain elevation out there, because they set it at one-ten, but the building inspector back at, in the time, realized it's actually elevation a hundred, so he, he had no issue, because it floods to elevation a hundred. Elevation a hundred and ten, when I put it in the tree out there, he came out and took a look, and you'd have to flood out all of Cohasset to reach a hundred and ten foot elevation there. But, but again, there's, there's a lot of open area around it, even if it's part of the lots, it's not, it's not going to be something where people are going to put the lawn areas right down to the edge of the swamp. And if you, if you walk the site, you'd, it's difficult to walk down to the edge of the swamp. And it's pretty, it's pretty steep out in the back. So I, to me, I just think it's a lot less of an impact if the eleven lots go through rather than doing the forty B project, but I, to me, it doesn't matter either way, I just, again, I'd rather come in before I build anything and tell you that I'm looking at a couple different options, and again, for thirty years, we did this with the planning board, and it's like, you know, I, I kind of like this plan better than I like that plan, you know, if they're, if they want to work with me, that's great, and again, I'd like to have the neighbors in Norwell on my side with it, and there really are no Situate neighbors. No, no houses in Situate that this is anywhere near.
And how does the site plan review get done? Is it dual site plan review then?
It's not a site plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the subdivision, yeah.
Both the boards would review it, they'd have two title blocks on it for each board to sign, which is what they did in Laurelwood. And it's a little bit of a, kind of a mishmash.
Logistical issues are there, but it's the same way with the forty B. I mean, we still have to do it with the, the ZBAs, the Conservation Commissions, and the Board of Health in both towns, so it's not a simple approval, but it's, it's certainly doable.
And maybe you know, the, the rationale for the eight, the six hundred foot limit is, is it fire, police, what, what's the rationale, so to speak?
Emergency vehicles and the time to, you know, get down the road and get to someone. You know, a lot of towns have these.
These will be private roads, right? These aren't ever going to be public roads?
Well, probably, it could be.
It could be a public road. I mean, if it's built to the full standard, it could be a public road. In both Norwell and Situate?
I mean, you already have mutual aid agreements with fire departments and police departments, so they're always helping each other and, you know.
So no plows too?
Yeah.
I don't know, when I see them paved, they pave right up to the line.
I, I don't have a problem if it, if it had to remain as a private road, that's not a big issue, because there will be a homeowners association, stuff like that, so that, that's stuff that can get worked out. For me, I'm just here for the general scope of things.
No, I appreciate that, but I also want to raise that issue now, because that may be where, I mean, we might be inclined to go, right, is why have a 200-foot road that's sort of in the middle of everything else, that, that becomes a public responsibility, right?
Right.
And are there, Laura, are there other examples of waivers as far as the length of the road that you can think of?
Over 26.
Probably, probably Steve knows.
Probably Steve knows these accounts, but interestingly, Laurelwood, which Steve mentioned, is one which had the road length waiver, and they gave the town a piece of open space in another whole part of town as kind of a quid pro quo to get the waiver.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what your chances are of, you know, getting something back, but it seems like the buffer might be something reasonable to ask for.
Yeah, yeah.
Protection over it, maybe a D restriction on it.
Right.
You know, something to really permanently protect it.
At one point in time, Steve, I had done a count, and there were at least 26 roads in town that are over the dead end roadway length. So, it's not, it, back in the day, it was a pretty common waiver to get from the board. It's more, it's, it really was more around how many lots do you have? So, again, I bring up the, the Arrowood Project. We weren't increasing the amount of lots, we just needed a little bit longer road to get to where the good land was that was buildable. We went through a wetland area. This one here, the front part of the roadway's not going to have houses on it, so you get to a certain point, and you have X amount of houses on basically 600 feet of roadway that's usable. The rest was just kind of an access in, and it's, it's happened quite often in the 30 years that I've been doing them.
Okay.
And Norwell's actually, on the, on their flexible open space, Norwell has a 1,200-foot dead end roadway length, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Are you here for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm at 9:15.
Okay, I'm just checking. Any other comments, questions? I mean, I, you know, personally, I think I would be amenable to, to, you know, considering that, with all the caveats that we would usually throw out there, including that I would want to consider things like buffer, like whether it will ever become a public roadway, those kinds of things. Those would be some of my concerns. And then I, I would also want to know that from a public safety point of view, that our public safety officials have sort of signed off on that, and that the road has to be wide enough in order to support all that, you know, whatever kind of turnarounds they need.
Typical subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, and this might be a little more than typical, because if the limitation is related to public safety and it's longer, then, then there might be the need, need to be some special accommodations. And what they are, I have no idea. But I would leave that to the fire department and the police department to give us some expert advice on. That's sort of my view on it. Where do you guys fall at?
I'd direct with that.
Yeah, conceptually, I think it, it makes sense. I do like what Laura says, that maybe there's some issues that we can get like a buffer, potentially something like that. I like that idea. But conceptually, it seems reasonable over a 40B.
So, that's where we are.
Yeah, and the response, the response time in here is actually faster than it would be to the back of the Arrowood Project, so as far as time for Situate to get there, this would be quicker for them to get there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about navigating through a longer route and whether there's an issue there, right?
Yeah, but no, I, I'll address all that stuff beforehand, you know, I'm just kind of, kind of looking for, you know, basically just the nod that, yeah, it looks like this could, this has got the potential to-
Yeah. Well, I think you've gotten that nod.
An animus? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. This is the minor thing, considering you have a lot of other hoops to jump through, but not amenable to this, I don't know.
Okay, no, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the informal discussion, and thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. Okay. I see we're running late here. We have, I guess, Ms. Kuhn for 93, 97, First Parish Road.
I'm taking notes.
So, it's about a quarter of 10, so let's try to, if we can, keep this to 15 minutes or so. I'm, I'm hoping we can do that, just recognizing the late hour.
Okay. And maybe we could just continue it at the next meeting, then, if I don't get everything done?
Well, let's try to get everything done. It looks like we have three conditions on the Planning Board approval that you want to discuss, so let's just discuss those, and, and hopefully, if things have already been addressed, we don't, we won't dwell on things, we'll just get this done and move on.
Okay. Well, it turns out that I did get some answers from Laura last night on those three things.
Oh, good.
So, I had, obviously, a lot more questions, but I have questions on what you replied to also. So, I did not print out the email, I got it last night at late, and working all day, I didn't have time. So, I did actually write up a little, um, oh, okay. Okay, so, I guess you saw what she sent to me.
I have the one from Robert Vogel, is that the one?
No, this was last night at 6:17 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's just walk down these one at a time, then. Condition number 10
Pre-construction conference. I saw the attendees and note, there was one sentence.
So, we required prior to start of construction, pre-construction, construction conference will be required prior to start of construction, construction, including the Planning Board's consulting engineer, a representative DPW, a site contractor, and a town planner. And I think Laura has responded that that particular meeting was held on December 13, 2016, and, and provided the notes and attendee sheet, so.
So, there was one sentence in the note. I think that they may have spoken more about it than just that one sentence. It was an attachment to the letter.
Okay.
Do you have that? No. Do you have the notes?
I just have the one copy of-
There were one, there was, I'm sorry, there was one, I, I don't understand your comment.
Well, it's just, the, the comment was that, well, first of all, it was a short site visit, and all that we looked at was erosion control and the construction entrance, both of which were in place.
Gotcha.
So, it wasn't really, there wasn't a lot of, you know-
It wasn't a four-hour conference?
Yeah, that was, that was what was referenced.
So, what did they say besides, I mean, what did you look at?
Well, there'd be erosion control going out of the site, you saw there, and you'd go in the front of the site as well, and at the construction entrance was there.
Okay. So, what site plan did you have at this point? It seems like the site plan that's on file right now is not the one that you had at the time.
No, because we hadn't done the site plan review.
Okay, so that was done before the site plan review?
Yeah, I had the ZBA.
And the site plan review was on the 22nd, I believe, of December?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
After going out there, it, you know, it appeared that there had not been a site plan review, that we got a proper process started just as quickly as possible.
And then they started construction without that?
That's right. Yeah, I think we kind of threw this before, but yes, you're right.
So, for the second one, the applicant provided the, so these notes and everything are in the files in the Planning Department?
Yes, you know, I, I don't know if I printed them out and put them in the, in the actual file. We keep a lot of our files electronically, but yes, certainly we can do that.
Okay, because I didn't see them.
I have everything, like, right here, just put it on file.
Okay, because I've been in several times and they haven't been there. So, as far as getting information, it's been a little difficult.
Can you, well, maybe we don't need to, to go there.
No, I mean, if, if your issue is, was a, was a check issued, yes, right, okay, for $1,695, right? So, if that's the question, then that's been asked and answered, I think.
Right, and so have all of those, okay.
So, what's the next question here?
So, when I did contact Laura, she said, well, what would you like this meeting to be about? And I said, we can start with items 10, 11, and 12. And I actually did want to review your decision, the meeting minutes, and the decision from the site plan review, that this was, I guess, filed December 28th with the town clerk.
And you wanted to review it for what purpose?
I have a lot of questions.
In terms of what?
So, well-
It's been followed?
Well, yeah, exactly. So, I'm just asking the board to correct the construction that's happening. The application was incomplete, and I have several examples of where it's incomplete. The design plans at the Building Department is not what the Planning Board approved. It's not what is being built. The design plans at the Building Department, I have them here, is not what's being built. Everything's been moved around. The application says that it's two and a half floors is what is approved. It's three floors. They have three floors on the actual permit.
Just so, just to make sure we don't kind of go over old ground here, it seems to me that some of these questions have already been addressed by the, by the Building Department-
Yeah.
Board of Design.
Well, I'm here to ask the Planning Board to correct what is happening, and to make sure that they are following through with what their decision was based on. So, I can give you a couple of examples.
So, before you do that, are we done with 11, 10, 11, and 12?
Um, well, the number 12 is that the erosion control of that needs to be repaired. It's been moved around several times from the previous storms, and so I think that the sediment controls, they're not currently in place. They're coming across the road, down the street, and into my lot, and my neighbor's lot, and my neighbor's basement. So, I think they need to put hail bays or more of those rolled-up things. It's all kind of broken up and stuff, just from being there for so long, I guess.
So, has, is this recent, some problem with the erosion control?
I, I've been, I've been by the site, I've looked in the front of the site, I haven't seen water. There was one day when I got an email from you talking about water, I went by, and there wasn't any water anywhere, so.
Okay, I can show videos, and I have pictures of it, but if you go by right now, look at the erosion.
Just, let's just stop right there. We don't need to see videos and stuff. If, if there's a concern that the erosion controls are not in place, or are broken, or something, I don't see any reason why we just couldn't take a look at it and, and get the contractor to fix it, right?
Okay.
So, let's just put that one to bed.
Since December, the Silk Sock, that's what it is. So, basically, the site plan review that was held in December 22nd, the plans that were there, and the site plan, and all of the decision, decisions are not followed, they have not been followed. So, I can go through the sheets, A201, A02, that were dated. Everything was based on those sheets, those architectural sheets, which are here, and the building's not being constructed to what was approved by zoning and by, also by the planning.
We don't have any jurisdiction over zoning. We only have jurisdiction-
Correct, so we won't mention that word again.
So, again, it should be just the site plan. We don't have architectural jurisdiction, we don't have, the Building Department handles that, so, so it's just the, the planning approval that we have jurisdiction.
Yeah, so it says, like, the west elevations, they were all approved on the sheets, A201, A202, A203. This is in your letter to the town clerk when you filed this. All necessary permits approvals must be received prior to the building permit being issued. That was not hap, that did not happen. It says final building elevation stamped by a registered architect or structural engineer. They are not stamped. There's nothing in the title board. None of the dates are there from all the revisions through the Design Review Committee and all of the zoning board meetings, Planning Board meetings, there's no dates there. There's one date, which is on file at the Building Department. So, let's see, oh, so, the first made of that, the major violation is building permit being issued without a site plan. How and why that happened, never should have happened. Does the acting building inspector know the procedures? So, I think because he issued the building permit, he does not know the procedures, so he's acting in that, and I think he's in the process of getting certified or going through the educational progress.
I don't think this, this isn't going to help us to-
Okay, let me just mention a few other things, and I will come back at the next meeting, then.
If there's a specific problem that exists today-
Okay.
-that we can address, then you're willing to hear about that and try to address it. I can't guarantee you that we can, we can't address those kinds of issues, all right?
Understood. Okay, so I am requesting a major site plan review. What was done was a administrative site plan review. A major site plan review is when the, I'll try to word this as best as crap as I can, is when the project is increasing by five spaces?
Yes.
Okay. So, I have the application for site plan review. So, currently, on the application for site plan review, the applicant put down six existing parking spaces, and there are not, there were not six existing parking spaces. And I have the site plan and, that he drew, and I've highlighted, sorry, it's in the center of this, and I highlighted the existing parking, oop, no, I will find it. I have highlighted the existing parking, there were three to, three to four, is what is quoted in the minutes from the meeting. So, he is actually adding six spaces, and in that case, there should be a major site plan review. And a major site plan review, you know the difference. So, that's what I'm requesting of the board right now, is that we go back and we do a major site plan review, traffic studies, all the plans are brought up to date, with all the necessary information on them, dates, stamps, everything. That's my one request. So, let's see, that was-
You're requesting that on the basis of a disagreement on what the number of existing parking spaces were?
Correct.
Right.
I have here.
I'm not sure we can address that here.
Okay.
I think we've already had on the record sort of a explanation of how many parking spaces there, that were existing.
Here it is.
And we made our decision based on that to do this kind of review, so.
So, I have the plan, and I've highlighted in yellow.
I don't know what that plan is, I'm sorry.
This is the revised plan that's on file with the Planning Board, with you.
That's, that's the plan they submitted?
Mm-hmm.
That's not the plan of the existing?
This actually has the stormwater, this rain thing in here, I believe, what's the question?
So, what does this have to do with the parking spaces, though?
Well, there's no way that five parking spaces go in this existing.
But they have this, they have this concrete slab back here, and, you know, then they were using parking over here, which wasn't-
Did you see the contract? Did you, did you see the-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
I think we're, we're going over, I mean, if there's an issue about what the existing parking was-
Yes.
Then, you know, you can address that. I think we've already looked at it, and we've already concluded that-
Mr. Morse has stated that there were three to four spaces, and I have the time and the minutes of when he actually said that, but you know-
I think the question is whether they were the spaces on the property, or whether they were the spaces that they were parking in, in the triangle. And people were parking in that triangle.
They have been for years.
Right.
You have to really consider that.
On the site, there were no, there was not five parking spaces on the site.
One of the problems, Mr. Chairman, that I see with all of this is that, and this seems to be the third one tonight, that, you know, the barn has, the door's closed.
Yes.
And unfortunately, there should have been, in hindsight, an appeal of the zoning board and their Section 6 finding. That did not happen. And, and then, short of that, when finally, it ended up with us for an administrative site plan review, if there were issues with that, then within the necessary 20 days, there should have been an appeal.
Correct.
There was not.
I agree with you.
It's too late. You know, it's done. It's done, I'm sorry.
It's not too late, and I would like to say that it's not too late, because what you approved and what you reviewed is not what is being built on the site. You approved a two and a half story. I have the minutes here, I've highlighted everything from that meeting, you approved a two and a half story building, and that's not what's being built. You approved a two and a half story building, and that's not what's being built. And he avoided the major site plan review because of the parking, and he specifically said that, and he knows how to get around it.
But the diocese-
There's going to be major traffic studies.
The diocese has here, so we're not prepared to reopen this, right? If there's a problem in what we've, we've asked the builder to do and there's an issue with it-
Okay.
Then, you know, we can, we can take that up and we can make a decision one way or the other on that.
Okay.
We're not going to reopen and do a major site plan review.
So, what do I need to do to go forward with that?
There is no, there is no option.
It's done.
You've missed all the opportunities to do all of that.
I've missed all the opportunities because I agree with what was approved, but now they're building something different. Something different is there.
But you're asking to do a major site plan review. That's a completely different animal.
Because he lied about the parking spaces.
Well, that's what you say, right? I mean, it's sort of-
He did.
It's, well, he says he didn't, right? So, I mean, all I've got is two different words, right?
Did anybody look at it? Did you look at the parking there in the review?
All I've got is your work and your-
There were no plans.
Right.
Okay, so you could not have made a decision because the application was incomplete. All the information on that was not filled out. The building permit says that it has, I mean, there's incredible amount of discrepancies and inaccurate information on everything, and I think you need to start and go back, get the correct drawings stamped, dated, the whole bit, get the site plan up to date, and which is this one. It hasn't been current. It's not current, so it's just, it's an absolute mess. The building permit, it looks like the planning board approved it on January 23rd. I mean, he's already built it. It's all like, you know, constructed. We had to call-
As Ms. Burbine said before, that horse has already left the bar, right? The ZBA made their decision, and there may have been, you know, mistakes made one way or the other about issuing a building permit, but that's all water over the dam at this point. We've issued our site plan review. We've issued our determination.
You did not have-
It's, it has not been appealed, and so it's, it's the current document that stands, and we're not about to sort of reopen all of that. If there's something specific that's not being addressed here-
Okay.
-then we can look at it, right? And say, okay, we'll look at this particular issue. We don't need to, we don't need to walk through, you know, every drawing, et cetera, at this meeting. That's why we have a town planner who can address those issues and enforce our site plan.
Can we have someone look at the plan that you have on file and tell me how many parking spaces could fit in this that Morse Engineering has drawn on here?
Well, I, what I just was trying to say is that the plans don't take into account the off-site parking, and when I'm reading this, the applicable major site plan review, it doesn't specify that the five parking spaces have to be on the site. It just says that the new use requires more than five more parking spaces. So, some of those parking spaces were in that triangle.
Which is a two-hour parking. There's a sign up there right now, two-hour parking that has always been up there.
But I'm, I'm just talking about the way it was actually being used.
Exactly.
So, he is making changes to increase this by more than six spaces.
Well, I mean, I disagree with you, and I'm sorry, but I just don't see it now.
So, because they were parking down the street or across the street or whatever, because he's increasing the parking spaces here?
It was directly across the street, and there were always, you know, three to four cars there.
It's no different than we do down at Harbor.
In the harbor, we rely on people using the common parking area as a way of meeting their parking.
This was a major redevelopment. I mean, if you see the difference between the square footage and what is being built and the height.
But if you're basing on parking, we've made the decision on the parking.
That's why I'd like to start.
We've made the decision on the parking, all right? So, we're not going to reopen this. This is, this is done, right?
So, what do I need to do?
If there are issues in our approval that are not being followed-
Okay.
-then we will attempt to enforce those, right?
Okay.
Other than that, we are not going to reopen a new site plan review or anything like that.
Okay.
And I think that's all there is to say about this.
Okay, so, under the required prior to application of the building permit, it says that the final building elevations need to be stamped by a registered architect. They are not. There is no documents, plans, and this is in what was filed with the town clerk.
Okay, so there's one item. That's one item we can check. Now, before you go on, we have a lot of little individual items like this. Make a list and send it to Laura. I mean, we don't need to spend another hour walking through this here tonight.
I just, I want the board to know that-
We'll get a copy of the list, and we will know.
Okay, so, one more minute. Let me get back to my notes. I'm sorry, I have-
Well, while you do that, maybe Laura can help us out with, I'm reading some of the letters. It sounds like that Mr. Vogel had responded back. So, what was the pieces? I'm trying to figure out in my mind all the different pieces, like when they happened. Has Ms. Coon been responded to by several, like the ZBA and by the building inspector? It seems like that's what I'm looking at here.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
And the board of selectmen.
We've seen a whole number of emails and-
Ben had his hand up. I don't know what was going on.
Okay. So, after the meeting on the 22nd, I will just end with this, and then we can all go. Ann was saying that they couldn't be any closer to their neighbors. It's very close to the road. It's basically right on First Parish. Laura had said that Greg Morse mentioned-
I don't know what we're talking about here.
These are the comments that were made after the planning board decision because of the discrepancy in the plans. This is what we heard after the meeting.
Are these approved minutes?
No, I can get the-
In the planning board hearing? Then we don't need to hear them right now, okay?
So, nothing really shows the big picture.
If that was your last thing.
Well, then, I do need some time to come back and talk to the board, and I have requested a meeting with the planning board, the zoning board, and the building department, and nobody has recognized that, to meet and go over what is actually happening. And you know what's happening. You know exactly what's happening.
What I'm asking you to do-
You do.
Are you, what I'm asking you to do, if you have items in our site plan approval that you think need to be addressed, please make a list and provide them to Laura. Laura will provide us a copy.
Okay.
You may not be happy with the resolution of every single one of them. I can't guarantee that. We will look at them. We'll address them if we feel we need to, and that will be that. We will not reopen the hearing. We've already made a decision. The appeal period's passed. It's, it's in place. This is what we have.
But something different is happening now. What you made a decision on is not happening at the site.
You have the opportunity to go through that in this list and provide that to Laura, right? That's, that's all, that's all I'm asking you to do, right? And I just don't want to belabor it here, you know, point by point at this point. Let's get the things on the list and-
The horse is out of the stable. The horse is out.
We frankly thought-
This is happening all over town, and you're not following up with your decisions.
We frankly thought that your three issues were 10, 11, and 12. So, if you've got more issues-
Okay, I will come back.
Please, don't, don't piecemeal them. Don't throw them at us. Give us a list, and if you think-
You sort of interrupted me with the procedure and what I wanted to actually accomplish tonight, but-
Well, we had on the list, you wanted to talk about three things, so that's why we put 15 minutes to really try to address that. We're already at almost a half an hour now, and-
So, I just have one question. Did you approve a three-story building? Two, three-story buildings to be put on that site? Did you approve a three-
We approve what's written in this, in this decision. That's what we approve.
And that's a two and a half story building?
It actually, I was reading just some comments from Mr. Vogel who said that the, it was actually not, there was never a comment about the number of stories. Where is that?
Yeah, so let's, let's not, let's not go back.
Yeah. Look at the plans in your file. They're all in the file, okay? They're all in the file. These dormers go up to the roof. They don't go into the roof. Everything's been revised. Everything's been built. They have maxed out every single space, and that is not what you reviewed. That's not what you took into consideration when you made your decision.
Fair enough.
So, you said, okay, you can paint the house blue, and now they paint the house red. This is what's happening. They're not doing what you approved.
Once I'm here, I'll go out, go to the site, take a bunch of pictures, and then we should all have the same information, and we should all be on the same page.
Okay, let's do it sooner than later.
Same time, you know.
Because this is going on way too long, and the driveway's not going to work. It's going to be major traffic on that road without a traffic study.
Any other comments?
Oh, Dan, one second, I have a first question. I just have one comment, and it was regarding some of the discussion that was going on about appealing site plan review. My wife and I actually did try to appeal the site plan review, and perhaps we were naive at the time because we didn't follow through with it, but we went to the town clerk as well as Mrs. Harbuckle, and neither really crypticized with advice on how to proceed with appealing site plan review because apparently it's not something that frequently happens. So, being busy and not really knowing what to do and not wanting to see legal counsel, we kind of dropped the ball on that, but I just want to point that out that we did actually try to make an appeal, but it was kind of a dead end.
Yeah, I think as Burbine said, probably the place to have tried to address that would have been in the first approval at the ZBA.
Oh, no, and I understand that. That would have been the site section six finding, and I understand that, but we weren't, we weren't necessarily opposed to the project in general, but we had more faith that site plan review could shape the project, and then that's why we appealed that part of the decision. But I just wanted to show, maybe we can make more-
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and unfortunately, one of the things we don't particularly spend a lot of time on is having our decisions appealed and helping people appeal our decisions. There is a, there is a standard process in the state to do that, and we hope not to have to deal with that much, but, you know, everybody has their opportunity to do that if they so desire.
Well, the building permit was issued, so right there. That just mixed everything up, and nobody knew what was going on. So, nothing was done in the correct procedure.
That's pretty straightforward, I'm sorry. That's a pretty straightforward appeal to appeal a building permit.
That's right.
But the site plan review, there's no process in state law to set up an appeals process for it.
Right.
So, I'm-
This is what I thought he was building. He's not building what you approved. He is not building what you approved, so why would I attest it? Why would I appeal it? This is what I thought was being built. This is not what's being built.
Fair enough, so as I said-
So, you need to look at the plans.
No, we're not, we're not going to, if you think there are things that are not being built that are supposed to be being built, that are in our decision, then all I would ask you to do is give Laura a list of those things, okay?
Okay.
And we'll address them because we want people to conform with our site plan review just as you do.
Understood. So, okay, well, maybe one thing, if I could just ask, is the fire protection is outdated. It's not current, so it's based on the construction having a basement. So, if, you know what, I want to give you my only copy. I've been printing everything like crazy.
Don't give us your copies.
But it was done January 9th, 2016, okay?
This is an inspection by the fire-
The building, the engineer, the fire protection narrative talks about a basement, talks about the height of the building being 26 feet. It's not what was built. So, with what was redesigned and what we finally came up with a design at the design review committee, this should have been updated.
I'm not familiar with what this is.
I'm not familiar with it either. I think it's part of-
We don't do, yeah, we don't do fire inspections or anything like that. We're site planned, basically, so the details, plumbing, mechanical, HVAC, that all gets dealt with at the building department.
The building department is not doing anything. So, I will get my list together and we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We're on to old business. We have accounting, any things we can fit? Have accounting?
Can I just leave this one? These were my notes for tonight, and this has some of my remarks, but I'll put them in order. If I could just leave that as part of my presentation.
Thank you.
I move to approve the requisition of $112.56 to Gatehouse Media, New England, for legal ads in the Situate Mariner for Zero Summer Street Scenic Road Hearing, for $135 to Amory Engineers for stormwater permit inspections at 489 Country Way, for $130 to Merrill Corporation for site inspection for 33 Greenwald, and $5,024.64 to Robert Berwick for a refund of the stormwater sovereignty for 33 Greenwald Road.
Did I hear it a second?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul is a favor. I missed that. My fault. Did we have any minutes?
No.
Okay. Liaise home reports, town planner report.
Make a little short report.
Yes.
With all the rain and all the construction around town, there were a number of issues that came up both over the weekend and since the weekend. Over the weekend, I went out and looked at Blanchard Farm. It did look like the swale was carrying the water in the general direction it was supposed to. The water was pinned in from Mrs. Quinn's property. The, her property was doing fine. There was some water, but it was clearly not from Blanchard. It was next to the septic system, and it was the pressure that just was collecting. So-
And did you observe it flowing all the way through, or was it just at the Quinn property that you really saw it?
It wasn't, there were a couple of little ponds that were not deep, but one of them did have about three inches of water in it, but the story's not quite ended because-
There always has to be another chapter.
It's always a turn. So, we got these binders that were brought in today of the calculations of the new stormwater calculations. Karen noticed that there was no ASB plan, so went to follow up with the ASB plan. Well, come to find out that the reason Greg Morse hasn't done the ASB plan is that it was not graded properly. So, there is some additional grading that has to take place there, and I do have an email from him saying that, so it remains to be seen if we can get this on the plane for the gen of when it's supposed to be, but at least we're on it. We're watching the time that this whole thing takes. They did get in this temporary swale, you know, pretty well, so I think it's just, I'm imagining it's like the 80 to 90% of what it should be, but we'll find out.
One of the things I'd like to make sure is part of that ASB plan is that somebody has surveyed the natural swale, or whatever they're calling it, from one end to the other, and that we know that we're getting, you know, a declining grade, and it's going to support the flow of stormwater. Because I think one of the things that one of the abutters had their engineers in here saying was that the grade looks like this, and that it won't, it won't act as a good stormwater device, and that maybe they need to actually go and grade the whole thing from one end to the other so that they get a proper grade in flux. And so, if they think it works the way it is, then hopefully somebody's done elevations all the way along and can sort of demonstrate that.
Yeah, I'll make sure that they survey.
Yeah, and not just like every 50, I mean, they're going to have to do pretty, pretty continuous surveying if what they're looking for are humps and valleys in that natural swale, and I think they're going to find that it's going to be very difficult.
You're saying it's not really the natural swell, it's a constructed swale, though.
No, no, where they're, where they put the swale in is right, but what I'm saying is from the, from the other end that's supposed to flow all the way down.
Even that was constructed, was it?
No.
To some degree? Okay.
No. They were lying on sort of this natural swale concept to move a lot of this water, and now that we have a constructed swale, at least part of the way, I want to make sure the whole thing-
Right.
-is working the way it should.
Okay, I'll make sure they go, you know, all the way down.
From wherever water's supposed to start flowing, all the way, right?
Yeah, like 10 or whatever.
Whatever it is.
So are you talking like spottable relations every so many feet?
Yeah.
In addition to, okay.
Yeah.
What are you, what are you talking about? We have to understand why-
Enough feet to determine whether we have a problem.
Like 25 feet?
No, I'm, I'm going with every 25 feet. You know, that's what I was gonna go with.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, you know, frankly, if they go one place and 25 feet later, and there's a valley in between, they should know that, right? And they should fix that, right? Because that's, that'll be where it ponds, and then it spills over somewhere.
I think I'm gonna have to go out once they've done the ASB and check it and make sure that it makes sense.
Yeah, it probably makes sense, yeah.
You know, you know, the hills and valleys.
Yeah, 'cause I think that, I think if you remember the engineers they had here, that was the case they were making, is that, you know, they're relying on this sort of natural elevation to convey all this. And when we looked, when they looked at it and sort of did the cross-section across it, it kind of did one of these things. It wasn't, you know, kind of a smooth swale. And, and, you know, maybe if the difference is an inch or two in places, that doesn't make any difference. But if it's a foot, maybe it does make a difference.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. Um, so, and then right on top of that, there was an issue at the library. The erosion control along Branch Street had been taken out because they were supposed to do hydroseeding over the weekend when there was that terrible storm.
Yeah.
And they did put it back, and it rained, and it just was washing so all down Branch Street. So, um, on top of having noticed this myself, I also got email from the contractors at Blanchard Farm, who were looking at the drainage all over town, and, you know, particularly on the town building sites, just to make sure they were being handled the same way as their own site. And, you know, they-
They had a point?
They had a point. So at this point, there is silt sock. I was told there is silt sock back at the library. I've gotta go back and check because they had straw model, and there were big gaps in it. You know, the, the first thing they did just was not adequate at all. So have to go back.
Well, we should practice what we preach.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
But, you know, to use another, you know, old saying, two wrongs don't make a right either, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Yeah. And the library doesn't affect immediate neighbors and their basements. I mean, it's affecting Branch Street, but it's not affecting people in their homes, so I think it's a little different. Anyway, then 700 Country Way, this is the old, my bullet property, um-
I'm sorry, which, which one?
700 and 704 Country Way, with a little tiny driveway with a garage to one side.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Across from the Ellis Estate.
Yeah, well, they, all of a sudden, they need their certificate of occupancy. So I went up there, and they had not only not put in the common driveway, but they had not taken out the pavement for the garage and all this sort of work. So now, we got all that organized, got Peter Pomeroy from Merrill out there to look at the pavement thickness in the driveway. We got the pavement taken out. Now it's just a question of taking out the aprons that go over the grassed area between the sidewalk and the street. So that's theoretically gonna be done first thing tomorrow morning so that they can get their CBO. And I guess there's some teachers that are waiting to move into one of the units, so hopefully, hopefully, everything happens the way it's supposed to. If it doesn't, they don't get this.
And again, on that, like, the, the existing garage is just gonna become a shed. That, that's not gonna be, I know, should I-
Well, it has to be a little step. It, it just shows you how important the details are. They, they have the pavement. The, the teachers are coming by. I'm talking to them about, gee, I'm sorry, you can't get your CBO because, you know, this pavement hasn't been taken out. Payment hasn't been taken out, but that's where we're gonna park. So now they're not gonna park there, but there is a garage door, a brand-new garage door with an opener there. So I'm hoping that it's used as a shed. That's another reason why taking the apron out in front is important, so they won't just, you know, let it drive in.
Drive over it? Yeah, exactly.
So hopefully that works.
And they had beautiful stonework-
They do have very, very nice-
...with steps that went down to this garage.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yes. They did.
And Ann's been out there.
Yes, I have. I drive by it every day.
So, um, so anyway, and then the only other site under construction where there have been a couple of issues is 50 Country Way. We've got most of the pieces together. We got the regulatory agreement back from town council, and it is going off to the state. So I think it's okay now to give them their, okay for their foundation permit, because everything has been done. The regulatory agreement hasn't been signed off by the town, but that will take another month, and we've gotten through the town council part of it, so.
What is the regulatory agreement?
This is the agreement between the state, the town, and the developer that the rental units that are supposed to be affordable, that they stay affordable.
Oh, that they stay affordable. Okay. Gotcha.
I have one thing to add-
Yes.
-from EDC. The field study committee, actually, it's two things, came in last night, and they need fields, and they're not really sure how they're gonna do it, but that was an interesting-
Oh, there's a subcommittee studying the-
Yeah.
-the expansion to get new fields?
New fields. And where they're going to get them, and how to pay for them, et cetera. And then to, um, on May 20th, from nine to one at the Maritime Center, they will be visioning on Green Bush. And so EDC will be making a presentation and having, um-
This is economic vision?
Economic vision.
It's what was presented to this board, right?
Yes, but it's also what we're doing is presenting it to the public, so that no one can say that they didn't know. I mean, and it's just trying to be proactive about all of this.
This is a visioning around economic development, right?
Yes, yes, it is.
So it's something that ultimately needs to be integrated into an updated master plan.
Yes.
And I was wondering, someone was asking me about, like, for North Situate, the visioning plan, are either of those available on the EDC website or on the, they are?
I do believe they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to, I didn't check, to be honest. Someone asked me-
And attempt to send you the link, and then I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay. So, and that, you know, that's, we're still going forward with our wayfinding and branding and so on and so on, and we're sallying forth.
Okay. Good. Well, I would entertain Bill's motion.
And I'll second Bill's motion.
Listen, I, we are adjourned.